Session agenda.
I'll say.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Alright, the agenda is adopted. Mr. Skeen will comment on our executive session that we had.
Yes, council met in executive session for the discussion of employment matters and for legal issues for cases that would be possible settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Skeen. Prior to public comment, we did have a notification that the fire chief from Meskapec Volunteer Fire Department is here, and we did ask him that he would, he's willing to speak to us regarding the fatal fire that occurred a few days ago in Meskapec, as many of you have heard, so I wanted to make sure that he had an opportunity to speak before other public comments of a different nature. So, Chief, if you don't mind.
Up here at the podium, Chief. And while he comes up, thank you, Mr. Lombardo, the chief and I discussed. We met this weekend. He's had an extraordinary event the county has, which we've all read about in the paper. Not only a first responder, but personally knows some of the people involved with this. And I asked him, I thought it'd be better than us trying to relay this to the community for him to give you some firsthand observations and possibly some needs that maybe the community could help. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Harry Nord, Fire Chief, Meskapec Row. Also this evening is my deputy fire chief, Jan Thomas. I'd like to thank you for reaching out to us in this time of tragedy. It's something you don't want to deal with every day. I mean, I've been doing it since I was age 14. I'm age 47 now. That's nothing I've ever seen this back. There's been many donations received from the public businesses and everything like that. Mr. Roberts asked me to come up and ask maybe if maybe the county could maybe help out the families also in some way. So that's why we're here this evening. So, that's about it.
Chief, do you want to walk them through? I made a copy of some of the funding mechanisms that.
Yes, we, our fire department, our own fire department, along with the Reliant Fire Company out of Berwick, PA, which is right across the bridge from us. We're going to be having a spaghetti dinner for the family as a fundraiser. There's also, there was a fundraiser on Sunday at Bandit Road House in Berwick. They raised money for the family also for funeral expenses. There's so many fundraisers happening, there's going to be one in Beach Haven, which is Salem Township. They're doing a car show and having bands, craft vendors, and all those miles will go to the funeral expenses as well. So, I mean, there is 10 individuals that did perish. And, uh, which is, unfortunately, one of the young gentleman that did perish was one of our members and our fire service. And his father is my fire chief's lieutenant. So. Actually, he was on the engine when we pulled in. And he did realize it sounded him out.
What I read, this is a horrific tragedy and maybe one of the biggest fires in terms of fatalities this county can has recollection of. And the chief was on the scene at it, and he, when I talked to him Sunday, was certainly battle fatigue from trying to do this for the last few days. He probably has done nothing but this, but I did want to mention that whether you go to a fundraiser or not, there is an organized GoFundMe campaign, and I'm going to ask, maybe through Mr. Cage, we put this on for a while with a link on our own homepage, so if you get lost in that process. Red Cross is doing some things, I've reached out for some help in terms of funeral expenses. It's got something that we challenge our finance director to see what we can and can't do. But all that said and done is, the family needs help.
Yes.
They need financial help. So, um, if you don't know about GoFundMe, it's a good way, send it home, and you can help its family.
Marnie, we are having at our firehouse what they call a critical stress debriefing. It's actually put on by EMS council in the area. We have roughly between 20 and 30 councils coming for EMS, fire EMS, also the 911 dispatchers that were on that night. I invited them, and along with the family will be present with us. And there'll be group sessions along with one on one.
Chief, thank you very much for your hard work. As a fellow first responder, I understand how terrible a situation like this is, a fatal fire, especially when it involves one of your members. You guys did a great job that day.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Chief. I just want to say to you and your deputy chief, I cannot even imagine what you all went through. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
First of all, very sorry for the loss, obviously. I don't know how to prepare or handle that number of people perishing. But I do want to recognize the fact that our county, mental health, et cetera, have been providing assistance to whatever parties needed. And I really congratulate our, our people on our side because they did that over the weekend and got it out there and then really provided the help that many people needed.
Yes.
And I'm sure they'll keep, continue that assistance until hopefully reach some, I don't know how to reach conclusion, but at some point where you don't feel you need that. But, uh, you know, a small community like you, like you guys are, and the fact that probably everybody in the town knows one or two.
Well, yeah, well, I understand, everybody knows everybody. It's a tight-knit community, that's for sure.
But, uh, very sorry for your loss and very sorry for the community. But the counties through the assistance will do what they have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
John, can we help you say a prayer for him?
Absolutely. Can we just take a moment of silence once again for all the victims of that fire in Meskapec? Thank you very much. Alright, we'll now move into the public comment on agenda items only. We have a few slips up here. First, we have Mr. Zarneki. You were up before, you want to go back up where you were?
Sorry about that earlier.
Yeah, you're okay. You have three minutes, sir.
An important part of any democracy naturally is voting. Therefore, I feel anyone in authority like you council people should make it as easy as possible for people to vote. And during the past two or three elections, I used the Dropbox to vote. I know a lot of other people use drop boxes also. I don't know of any fraud in that regard. I believe out west where people have to drive many miles to vote, sometimes they use drop boxes out there also. So I certainly wish that council would continue to allow the drop boxes to be used in Luzern County for voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zarneki. Ms. Kruger. Kara Kruger. Is she outside? Chief, sir.
Good evening, council members and constituents. My name is Kara Kruger. I'm a resident of Plains. Last meeting, I told you a bit about why for people like me battling disabilities, drop boxes are a useful tool. I demonstrated that by detailing my lived experience, my truth, my struggles, my pain, a very real raw, and until recently privately lived part of my life and how I felt about it. I did this to share a viewpoint that is thankfully not seen by the majority, but nonetheless is very much seen. It was for the sole reason of helping you step into my shoes to inspire empathy and help show that all abilities, knowledge bases, experiences, and votes are valid and deserve a chance to be counted as such. I was by quite a few dismissed as entitled for asking that the boxes remain funded so that these votes can be collected. To me, the entitled ones are those who think that their voices and opinions are the only ones who matter. I come from a family who serves this community in the armed forces, law enforcement, and political offices, who taught me from as far back as I can remember exactly how dangerous that line of thinking is and how important it is to stand up against it. I'm fighting this because our state constitution says under Article One Declaration of Rights, Section Five Elections, elections shall be free and equal, and no power, civil or military, shall at any time be, at any time interfere to prevent the free exercise of the right of suffrage. I'm fighting this because I feel very strongly it is the right thing to do. I'm not a lawyer yet, but I do, but to me, this clearly is, clearly this ordinance interferes and prevents the right to vote for many people in this community. As I said in my speech last meeting, ableism in all forms needs to be called out. I would not ask anything of anyone that I would not be willing to do myself. I will fight this because it is wrong. I am asking you council members to help me do the same. Should this ordinance pass, there will be litigation because it is illegal to suppress votes in demographics in this country. Again, I said last meeting, my name is Kara. I am a constituent of the county that you serve. This is my voice, remember its sound, because those who try to silence it never hear its end. My voice matters. My vote matters. Our votes matter. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Ian Rolison.
Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize, I'm underdressed. It's been a rough last couple of days for me. I was in the ER at the VA hospital a couple of days ago. And I might have a hot date with the oncology department in the next week or two, depends on how things go. So my father and I are disabled veterans. He was in the Marine Corps. I was in the Army, hence the hat. And he was served in Beirut in 1983. He was in the Marine Corps barracks building that was hit by a truck full of high explosives. He's got some significant spinal cord nerve damage, and so he's not quite as mobile as I am. So getting out to vote is kind of hard for him. And so he actually does utilize the drop boxes. And I know it's, it's a politically charged topic, but I think there are people maybe on both sides of, of the aisle who do have some issues. Maybe they're disabled, maybe they're, you know, maybe they're getting up there in age and, you know, they're not as mobile as they used to be. I know our census demographics, at least the recent ones, show that, you know, we're almost like 20% of our population, I think, is 65 or older. Unfortunately, I think our county is facing some issues. We're not really getting any younger, but that's a separate issue. So we do have to consider the kind of people we have in our county and the amount of people that we might disenfranchise if we get rid of these boxes. And I did want to say, I think it's particularly painful for disabled veterans who might lose out on an opportunity to vote simply because the ability to drop off their ballot and a drop box is taken away from them. That seems to have a very special sting, and I know for my father in particular, who watched a lot of his friends die and whose life almost ended as a result of it. It's particularly frustrating. I do think, you know, election integrity is an important issue. And certainly we should address it, but I do think there are other ways that we can go about doing it without, you know, potentially taking away the votes of a large swath of the constituency. And frankly, I think there are a lot of other pressing issues that are facing the county right now, like economic ones that we should definitely address. I know we're all hurting, but I think we need to sort of find things that unify us rather than pull us apart. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sheila Sadenman.
Good evening, council and members of the public. My name is Sheila Sadenman, and I reside in Kingston. As a former member of this council, and more importantly, for the purposes of my comments, a member of the Election Inquiry Committee formed by the last council. The committee was established by the council to review any blatant errors, missteps in procedures and overall complications in the 2020 election, which could be remediated by suggestions from the committee. This bipartisan committee included two Republican council members, namely Mr. Harry Haas and Mr. Stephen Urban, in addition to two Democratic representatives, Councilwoman Linda Howkin and myself. The final work product of our committee included a number of recommendations to the county that we believed would remediate problematic issues encountered by our elections. In not only the list of recommendations, but the committee's discussion surrounding these issues, not once in our recommendations nor in the in-depth review of the election procedure did the elimination of drop boxes come up. It is not part of our recommendations, and it wasn't even discussed as the main points that are problematic with the election. The, in fact, the use of drop boxes plus no excuse mail-in voting contributed to the overwhelming numbers of voters participating in the 2020 election. It follows to me that the bigger the turnout, the more decisive the vote, and ultimately more genuine the results. Thank you.
Rhonda Rabbit. Ms. Rabbit, can you please state your municipality? Luzern.
Good evening and thank you. I'm Rhonda Rabbit from Luzern County, and I found myself earlier this summer in the same room speaking for the first time, and I'm speaking on the same topic here again. Namely, the need to ensure inclusivity and accessibility in the voting process of democracy. It was seven years ago that I moved to Wilkes-Barre. I felt called to come here to serve the community, and I've been doing that through education. And what I find interesting is my theme in all my speaking to advocate for children is the same theme that I speak with here tonight. For our democracy to work, it's our responsibility to pave pathways for the citizens to have accessibility and inclusivity in the voting process. So for me, I'm asking that the drop boxes be just part of that process to ensure that everyone has that accessibility and everyone is included. I think the citizens here locally in the community, from my experience, really would like to see the infrastructure taken care of, those COVID relief funds to be distributed and have us working on things that really impact them on a daily basis. So my hope is that is where you can spend your time and the drop boxes become part of our process in voting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Sapphire Girl of the year.
Can you please mute your microphone? Deborah Jordan.
My name is Deborah Jordan. I am from Sugarloaf Township.
Please louder, please.
Certainly. The reason that I'm up here at this podium tonight is for the carers of the world.
Excuse me. The microphone is in front of you.
Okay. I just was addressing.
Everybody will hear much better.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So the reason that I'm up at this podium is for the carers of the world. The decisions that are to be made tonight are not about convenience. They are not about one single election. They are about the continuity of our republic to hold fair and free elections. Drop boxes are, they don't discriminate against any one particular race, gender. They discriminate against everyone in the solution of your vote. You, they are not known to be secure, and I will get into the reasons behind this to Luzern County Council. There are approximately 100 patriot groups across our state of Pennsylvania who have taken election integrity, not only for ourselves, but for the entire population of the state as their number one concern to secure our elections. This is not a small task. The coalition of patriot groups has obtained the signatures of state senators and representatives, councils and candidates, commissioners and sheriffs, who have agreed to push forward and give support to cleaning up the mess that no excuse mail-ins and drop boxes have caused to our voting process and the confidence in it. As I said in the past, this is not a democratic or republican issue. This is a problem that affects everyone, regardless of your party affiliation. During a recent meeting with a state senator, we spoke directly about the 2016 election when Democrats claimed election fraud. Then we spoke of the 2020 election when Republicans claimed the same. If both sides are declaring irregularities, then why not remove the issues that are most prominently causing them? Namely, no excuse mail-ins and drop boxes. As noted in the Standard Speaker Newspaper article of August 7th, we cannot even keep people in the roles associated with the Election Bureau and the Election Board. This problem is not historical, it is contemporary, and it correlates directly to the current voting procedures. The solution to this problem is attainable. The solution is to remove the problematic features that have been added to our electoral process. We need to scale back, we need to simplify, we need to remove the added weight that has swabbed down the voting process. One of these weights easily removed is drop boxes. Thank you, everyone.
Christopher Gillis.
Excuse me?
Address the call.
This is the second time I've had to come back here now, and I'm not really too happy about it. I was kind of hoping that you would have dropped this issue. There's been no fraud associated with the use of voting drop boxes, no fraud. And let me remind you that the only fraud in Luzern County in the 2020 election was a guy from 44 who tried to vote for his deceased mother. So that was the fraud. Now, it's been brought to my attention that you guys can't really outlaw the use of the drop boxes. That's been approved by the Republican State Legislature. What it seems to me is going on here is some kind of an underhanded move to use some kind of a technicality to say, we're not preventing you from using the drop boxes, we're just not going to move them. We're not going to use any county resources to move these back and forth. I've talked to Denise about this, and it seems to me that there are two solutions here. You can either use county resources to move these boxes, or you don't. If you're looking for secure elections, you probably want to use county resources to move those. But if not, maybe we'll have some, maybe we can have some private citizens move those boxes. And I would be glad to volunteer my personal services without pay, Stephen, to have these boxes moved. They're empty, there's no security risk in moving them. So, I think maybe that's another solution, to just have private citizens move these boxes around. If the county won't do it, I don't think there's any prohibition against just anyone doing it. But I think maybe the problem for our elected officials would be that if the citizens find out that something that they wanted was refused to them by county officials to the point where good-hearted citizens had to come out and do their work for them, maybe those county officials wouldn't have their chairs on this, this council very long, Stephen. So that's really all I want to say on this. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not going to be talking about drop boxes, so we're going to give it a little change here. The agenda item I want to talk about is number four, the appointment of the head of the Administrative Services Division. Behind me on the wall here, the very first paragraph talks about openness in government, home role, which I was very instrumental in getting in this county, was put in here for a reason, for openness, transparency. Yet we have an agenda item with no name, no salary, nothing about the division head. That is not open government. The people in this room pay the salaries for those division heads. The people in this room have a right to comment on an agenda item that's been open and transparent. The name needs to be here so that citizens of this county can comment on that person who's being appointed, whether we support them or we don't. We have a right as citizens to comment on that. To have this agenda item beg us that for an employee of this county who we pay for is wrong on so many levels that I just can't start to enumerate them all. The argument that if they apply for a job here and they aren't picked, that they would possibly be able to have repercussions from their previous or their other employer is folly. This is government, this is in private industry. Whatever you do in government is public. Whether you like it or not, if you don't want it exposed, don't apply for a job here. It's real simple. If you don't want that exposed to your previous employer. I think we need to be real open with the citizens of this county, and we need to start going back there. This county is going to a place where it's getting darker and darker. That's not what the design of this government was, and it will not be that way as long as I'm here to fight about it. In the charter, and this goes to the issue with the, uh, hiring of the man, of division heads, it says council confirms. It doesn't say council approves, council confirms. When Bob Lawton was here, division heads were put out in the open long before this council even confirmed them. And if you don't confirm them, that doesn't stop them from hiring them. We need to stay in our swim lane, and the swim lane is not to tell the manager who he can hire and who he can't hire. The manager can hire and fire anybody he wants. Your job is to hire and fire the manager. We need to remember that. You don't have to confirm anybody he brings here. You could say no, doesn't stop them from hiring them at all. That is not the design of the charter, and the charter clearly says that in the second paragraph of our charter. It says if you don't confirm him within 30 days, the person still works here anyway. So you don't have the ability to tell the manager he can't hire anybody. The issue I have with the person he's going to hire is an elected official. Is that the new trend? We hire elected officials here in the county? We just hired one in the Bureau of Elections. Now we're going to hire one in the Office of Administrative Services. What's personnel code say? 10-3, and I'll wrap up. 10-3 says people who work for the county in two jobs have to get approval from the county. Hopefully that happens, but I think this council needs to take a serious look at who they're hiring.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. We have two people online that have their hands raised. Mr. Wallett.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I'd like to comment about the, uh, the drop box ordinance. I think it's a terrible, excuse me?
What town do you live in, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Pittston.
Luzern County.
I think it's a very bad idea to pass this ordinance about the drop boxes. Drop boxes are convenient for many people, they're, they're, they're ideal way to vote. There is no fraud that's been recorded to have happened with them. And you're just taking one more way for citizens of the county to express their only right to express their opinion. We should be encouraging people to vote, not discouraging them to vote. So I would just, you, you have here a solution looking for a problem. There's no problem with the drop boxes. So I would hope that you would, uh, So I would hope that you would vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Mark Raybo from Hazleton speaking. I would like, I would like to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, first of all, my heart goes out to the people of Nesscapett Borough and their loss. It is heartbreaking and tragic, and I will do everything in my power to share the link and get the word out to ensure that there are people who would open their, you know, hearts and try to donate for the loss of the people of Nesscapett Borough and those families that perished in that fire. First of all, with regards to the drop boxes, I would like to put out the facts. Facts are stubborn things. And first of all, somebody brought up the Constitution with regards to elections. I guess the person forgot to read Articles or Section 6 of that same article, Election and Registration Law. All laws regulating the holding of elections by the citizens or for the registration of electors shall be uniform. The key words, shall be uniform throughout the state, okay? Now, that being said, the September 2020 Supreme Court ruling, which allowed for drop boxes because it was never statutorily approved, that's a fact. There is no law that allows for drop boxes to be used, only mail-in ballots. Act 77 of 2019 only allows for mail-in ballots, not drop boxes. The progressive neo-Marxists on the state Supreme Court imposed the drop boxes to be utilized, and then it was appealed to the US District Court of Western Pennsylvania in the following month that proceeded, and Kathleen Buckbar, who was the DOS Secretary at the time, said that the drop boxes would be secured. And I find it ironic that the former councilwoman and the former vice chair of the Election Board said that the drop boxes, you know, there's nothing preventing it. That is true, there's, there's nothing preventing it, but there was nothing that approved the usage except for an edict by jurists that are not legislators. So therefore, to say that drop boxes are approved by law is a parcial nonsense, and it is a lie, is misleading. So to say that is just, it's just feelings over facts, nothing more. So I urge the council to allow for the state to pay for the delivery. That is their purview, not the county's purview in this matter. And it is also not the purview of the council to basically rewrite election law. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Mark Schaefer.
Hi, everyone. Mark Schaefer of Wiltsfair. I would like to also speak on drop boxes, and I think the last person put into very good perspective. If you think that drop boxes are some plot and that they're a source of fraud, you're also latching on to what our previous speaker just said, that the judges on the state Supreme Court are neo-Marxists? If that's something that sounds like it's attached to reality and based in fact, I don't know what else to tell you. There are people who have been jurists their entire life, and I don't think we have a lot of neo-Marxists in that area. The drop boxes, as everyone has said, make it infinitely easier for elderly people, the disabled, et cetera, all those who have obstructions to voting to vote. And it's pretty clear what the effect is. We saw in the 2020 election historic turnout, and I think that that's clearly the issue for people like the councilmen who are reporting this issue. They know that if turnout is high, it's not good for them, so they want turnout to be low. The other councilmen before have said that we didn't have this before, and our elections have always been so great. As someone who's run for local office, I know, and I know that you all know, that turnout in local elections in Luzern County can often be as low as 20% or in the teens. And in a place like ours that has such really disappointing and frightening turnout, I don't see how there's any possible sense in making it even harder to vote. People are clearly already struggling to vote, and as we saw in the 2020 election and the 2021 election, when you enable more paths to voting, that it just makes it so much easier that turnout noticeably increases. And if we're living in a democratic republic, you think more people voting would be a good thing. As the former councilwoman said, that the more people you have voting, you would think the more confident you would have in the result, that it's an actual reflection of the will of the people. So I hope that you vote against this ordinance. It's clearly an attempt to suppress voter turnout, and also to follow up on the talk of the Constitution and the county charter even. The county charter clearly says this is a matter for the Board of Elections. You're grossly overstating, overstepping your duties by getting involved in this matter, and it's a pretty obvious workaround from something in the charter that's there to prevent corruption and to prevent abuse of the election process. The election process was taken away from county council because with home rule, people thought they wanted to make a less system, less problematic system. So going back on all that.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Any other members of the public or public input at this time? On agenda items, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thank you. First of all, they give you these really cool things so you guys can vote, it's called stamps. I think everybody has access to them. And if anybody needs stamps to vote, instead of, if you can't leave your house, you can get some stamps right there. Okay, we are at war. The unhinged left wants to take over our country. They have weaponized the FBI, weaponized our teachers, weaponized our elected officials against us. Most of those that work for the government work against the American way, free enterprise and freedom in general. They know how to eat an elephant, you take one bite at a time until the elephant is gone. They are quite efficient at calling us names and coordinating every power they have against good Americans. American of all is dead, and we are at war to save what is left. Politicians have won, it's them, the media, sports figures, celebrities, and the extreme wealthy, that do what they want, and we can do little to stop them. But I will not go down without a fight, I have the courage and I will never back down. As Patrick Henry said, "Give me liberty or give me death." I was here two weeks ago, right before I had my toe amputated, I'm here on crutches today. I will be here next two weeks and two weeks after that. The only way that we can survive is to elect strong, courageous people that will not sell us out. Sad to say, we do not have the majority in Luzern County Council. Some are cowards that are, as soon as they find out there might be a lawsuit, they're afraid of a lawsuit. Too bad. Steve Urban figured out a legal way so that would make it harder for cheaters to cheat. Good job, Steve. I thank you, Luzern County thanks you, and I'm sure you will be re-elected for your courage next November. What he has proposed is a legal way to make it harder to use drop boxes. Done. Where do we sign up, is what we should be saying. How do we, how should we, the only question should be is how about election integrity? The left got their judges to keep the drop boxes in PA, like Mark Raybo so eloquently said, which I can never say so eloquently. We didn't like that, we didn't like the cheating, but they said it was legal, so they did it. So here's our chance to do the same. It's legal. Let's make it harder for them to cheat. That's it. Simple as that. And if the person that said that she would put it on her back, how do you put it on her back? Make sure she has insurance, let her pay, just don't let our citizens pay. I think we do. Anyone that doesn't vote for this will pay the price the next election. There are many of us out there, we'll make every voter in Luzern County know who made it easier for cheaters to cheat. And election integrity is the top three across the United States. And if there wasn't cheating, it wouldn't be an issue. So it's obvious there's cheating. So I thank you all, and if anybody needs a stamp, I've had it, and I'll pay for stamps for everybody in Luzern County. Thank you.
Any other members of the public or public input?
Hi, Mike Susak, Laplin Borough. I'm also the Director of Elections, I'm speaking later this evening, but today I'm just speaking on the, I guess on two agenda items, you know, one, I'm going to be addressing just kind of the state of the, under the county manager's agenda, kind of giving a state of the Elections Bureau, but also talking about the Dropbox briefly. But on the first topic, the comment was made earlier, and I say this respectfully, that one of the reasons that there's been so much turnover in the department and across the nation is somehow related to drop boxes. That is categorically untrue for myself, I have never made that claim to anyone, I absolutely do not believe that. The Brennan Center has done a comprehensive survey of elections professionals who are leading this profession. The three main reasons that they give are political interference, threats of violence, and disinformation regarding election fraud. So that's, so I just wanted to clarify that. So if the public is making a misstatement of fact, to make sure that's clear, we're not leaving the profession because of mailbox, mail ballot drop boxes. So regarding the agenda item, I just want to, I believe it's important that policy is made on just sound information. So I wanted to simply tackle just a couple of things that were brought up at the July 26th meeting that I think need clarification. The first was council member Leskavich said that the average in Luzern County of ballots dropped off per day was 74. Pittston City at the library, too, had 259. So I guess this person went and did an investigation, come to find out, there wasn't even 50 people in the library all day, end quote. So I was curious, what was this all about? I did reach out to the director of the library. They do not keep track of patrons on a daily basis, they do report on a monthly basis. So it's unclear where 50 patrons had come to the library that day. Somebody has apparently done an investigation. I do wish that the council member would vet that information before, trying to, before using that at a public meeting to make a policy decision. Regarding Pittston, it's kind of, it's unclear why there might be different levels of turnout. One thing that I could say is that at the Pittston Library, they were closed for the entire first week due to a COVID outbreak. So also, we didn't do pickups on a daily basis. So when you see the return rate for, on a spreadsheet where he kept track of all this, that's not necessarily meaning that that's how many ballots were dropped off that day, that's simply how many ballots were picked up. Pittston Library is open in the weekend, in the evenings, there's, there could be a number of reasons unrelated to anything suspect about, you know, potential integrity issues. There was some confusion, another issue, there's some confusion about whether or not mail ballots could be scanned in more than once. I think the confusion is on the ballots. The ballots that mail to, or there isn't a QR, you know, like a QR barcode, that's actually a quality control device that's used by our printer, which simply makes sure that the correct ballot style is being inserted into the correct envelope during that insertion process. So make sure that a shikshini voter gets a shikshini ballot, and the plains voter gets a plains ballot. That's not read by our tabulation equipment at all, the QR code that you see.
Mr. Susak, if you would like to speak more on this topic, when the motion comes up, you have the ability to do so as the election director. So if you have more to say about it, we'll call you up back then. Anybody else for public input? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Denise Davis, I'm from Blackford Township. I spoke at the last meeting about the ballot boxes. All I can say is, up until COVID came along, we had absentee ballots, which are much more convenient than even driving your car up to a box, because you can do your ballot at home. Not only that, somebody said that there was no fraud in Luzern County. I know, I spoke last time and said, I know of at least one case, and some woman also said there were two other cases. That's just in Luzern County. I belong to a coalition of patriots, and there are proof of fraud by the hundreds with ballot boxes in Pennsylvania. That's all I have to say, all I'm saying is, I think that you should not have ballot boxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Anybody else for public input? Anybody else? Anybody else online? All right, hearing that, we will move into the agenda. Oh, I apologize, we'll read the four public comments that we received on emails. The first one is from Claudia Glennon, says, "Please read it into the public record. Due to Luzern County Council members, there is urgent county work you should be prioritizing. Quit wasting time crafting measures to restrict voting access. Your efforts are neither creative nor transparent and will hopefully be found in violation of our county charter. Prohibiting county employees or contractors from transporting or handling drop boxes and/or pickup of ballots is like telling your teenager they can use the car anytime it's available and then not giving them the key. Prohibiting use equals banning regardless of the specific words chosen to accomplish this end. Again, do not disenfranchise voters by basing decisions on lies and conspiracy theories. Opinion is really the lowest form of human knowledge, it requires no accountability, no understanding. The highest form of knowledge, according to George Eliot, is empathy, or requires us to suspend our egos and live in another's world. It requires profound purpose larger than the self kind of understanding." That's a quote by Bill Bullard, originally Claudia J. Glennon. The next one is from Denise Williams. Under the County Council, Section 2.117, Limitations, Non-Interference in the Home Rule Charter states, "No member of County Council or Committee or employee thereof shall publicly or privately give directions or orders to the county manager, any employee of the executive branch, the controller, the district attorney, or any employee or their offices, any member of the employee, any member or employee of a county authority board or commission, or any employee of the judiciary or office of court administration, or in any way interfere with their work or duties, except as may specifically be provided for in this charter." It also states under Section E, "The Accountability, Conduct, and Ethics Code, as required by Article 9 of this charter, shall provide penalties, sanctions, and remedies for violations of this section. It appears the ordinance Councilman Urban is proposing is clearly directing slash giving orders to the leadership of the Bureau on the handling of ballot drop boxes and interfering with the duties of the Board of Elections and Registration, which has given the Bureau a directive on providing ballot drop boxes. Also, the Administrative Code under Article 7, Election Sanction, Section 7.01 and 7.02 note that the Board of Elections has a supervisory role over the Bureau that includes prescribing, confirming, and imposing duties and orders. The county manager also has a similar role over the Bureau. I do not see anything noted about council having this type of role over the Bureau in this elections section of the Administrative Code. The charter framers took the council out of the elections process and placed it under the Board, Bureau, and County Manager. Remember when Urban went out of his lane when he accepted the chairmanship of the Elections Bureau? Well, this proposed ordinance puts him out of his lane again. The ordinance, if passed, sets the council up for potential lawsuits. Who pays for council's legal fees? The citizens of Luzern County, Denise Williams." The next one is from R. and W. Coquin. "We are Walter and Robin Coquin, who reside in Dallas Township Municipality. We understand council is voting on the above motions related to drop boxes tonight, and respectfully request that council do its job of protecting our election integrity, which means completely eliminating voting drop boxes in Luzern County. There is absolutely no ethical reason to have drop boxes for voting when people are able and make the effort to go to the store, get gas, et cetera. And absentee ballots have sufficiently addressed issues in the past when a voter truly cannot make it to the polls. Restoring election integrity should not be so difficult, and we hope council will also work to completely eliminate all computerized voting machines and return to more legitimate paper ballots. As taxpayers, we expect and will remember the Luzern County Council members who make election integrity a number one priority by eliminating ballot drop boxes." The next one is from Cindy Brandon from Wright Township. "Dear council members, please work to find out when weeds will be trimmed on roads such as Flagford." Mr. Plush. Okay, I apologize. Got in there without the other one. All right. Hearing all their public input, we will move into the approval of the minutes from the July 26, 2022 voting session.
Motion to approve the message.
Second.
Paul Schaefer? Opposed? Passes? All right. Motion to approve the ARP announcement and application.
So move.
Second. Was there any input in here about the match, 5% match?
Yeah, sure. Robin Booth is available, but yes, the 5% match will be added. Our goal was to try to get that one scheduled out from 52 pages, we got it down to like 15, and there's still some information, so you don't have We got it down to like 15, and there's still some information, so you don't have to search all over. She is available on, she did call in. I'll leave it up to you on where we are in the meeting. But yes, that, that will be in the final document, and our plan is to have the final document out on the 15th.
So the motion tonight is approved.
Honestly, I guess that's kind of the issue is, I don't know if it's really an approval, or if we're just kind of letting council know. Council obviously approved Booth, and Booth's putting together a plan. Do you actually need to vote on the plan? Or should it have been on the work session as kind of on FYI? I'm not really sure. But it's basically a plan to move forward with the formal application starting on the 15th.
You know what we're approving? You know what we're approving?
Yeah, we're approving the announcement and application.
But the application's not done?
Right, so we're approving the announcements.
Well, there's an announcement and application.
Is it a draft?
I believe it's a draft. It's not, it's not final copy.
I think it should be more refined.
Yeah, if I could, really quickly, good, good evening. If I could really quickly kind of show you where we are in the application, because the content itself, I'm not sure if you reviewed, but we have submitted. I know it's been submitted in draft, but I'll take less than five minutes. I'll take three minutes. I'm not sure if you all see my screen. What we're proposing, I'm at this point, and we've met with the... See my screen?
One second, Ms. Booth.
Okay, so just to not take up a lot of time, we met with your IT, your website and IT to figure out how we could best post the note, the application, and the other materials. So there would be a landing page, similar to what you had for the pre-application process, except it would say American Rescue Plan. As opposed to one big 52-page application, there will be links. There'll be one link that'll be to the actual notice of funding opportunity, which would be all of the key information about the Opera Program, what they need to know about eligible activities, and the types of projects that are eligible. There will be a PDF copy of the actual application, but we're proposing an online application tool that we use for our various other grants, and they'll be able to actually go online. It's about five pages online, very user-friendly. We're doing a, we're gonna have an application informational session that'll be on that page where they can register for one of three sessions, where we're gonna walk them through the application, just to make it as easy as we can and transparent. The exhibits are actually going to be a separate link, and then we're gonna give them a link to the Treasury rule. So the application platform that we're using, this is kind of screenshots to just show you how user-friendly it is, very straightforward. From the online application, they can do it on a phone, they can do it on a tablet, a computer, and they can upload their documents. It's simple questions like, please describe in detail the proposed project and how it supports Luzern. So we tried to make the questions very simple, and we tried to make it so that their, their projects will be designed to address the Opera requirements. They'll be able to upload files, they'd be able to sign the applications online. Once the applications are signed, they would hit submit, and then at that point, once they hit submit, the application will actually go to a web, to an email group that we have. A copy can be emailed to Luzern. The applicant will actually get an application that they'll be able to print it, and they'll have an email with the application, and from there, we will get Excel spreadsheets and schedules. So at any time, we can tell you how many applications have been submitted, what categories, what's the total amount of potential funding. This platform is at no additional cost to Luzern, because as I said, it's a platform that we use quite a bit. Brian gave some of the dates. I was being, I'm kind of being loose with the dates. Our goal is to get the application up as soon as the 15th, but if not, the latest the 31st, to give the, and then give the applicants 30 days to respond in the portal. That's why we have the information sessions, and then the grant evaluation period, of course, which includes the council, and then notice of awards in October and November. So that was, that's just, you know, not taking up too much of your time. That was just a brief presentation to give you an idea of where we are. The content, I believe, Brian, you shared with them, correct?
Yeah, so they had what was sent, I believe, on a few days before, and all the individual slides and all the individual Word Excel documents. But Maryland had sent probably six or seven, somewhere around there.
Any other questions? Ms. Booth, can you please make sure that you email a copy of that PowerPoint to us that we can post?
Go well.
All right, thank you.
My final question was, can we just remove application, just go forward with the announcement, instead of approving an application as it says?
Then the motion to remove the word "application"?
Excuse me, on that, if I may. I think your points well taken about the match, and I think what we should do is make an amendment.
Include that in the application.
Include it in the application, so they can at least move forward, because already, August, and that means we've had this money for a year and a half on most of it. So if you would make that motion, I'll make a second of that.
Would you just adjust the original motions, what, motion to approve the announcement in addition of the match to the application?
There's a motion.
I'll second.
So your motion is to amend, amend the application to include the 5%?
Or motion to approve the ARP announcement and the addition of the match to the application?
Minimum 5%.
The 5% match.
Yes, I did. That way they can move along instead of coming back to the, now, it's now the end of August.
We're approving the announcement and the, and amending the application to include the 5%.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence, on the amendment.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lasavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Now entertain a mo, or is there, are the emotions second?
Yeah.
Just do it again.
All right, well, let's make a, let's make a motion on the, on the amended, on the amended item.
Motion.
Venus.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Lasavage?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Motion to approve the budget, calendar, and process.
So move.
Ryan? There's a second. Discussion?
A question.
Go ahead.
As I mentioned, when this was first brought forward, we have a standing committee with the, in the council, and it's called the Budget Finance Committee. That committee did not review this proposal or have any input into this proposal. And I believe that would have been the first step, bring that forward and see what the committee thought, and within the committee could make a recommendation to the council. So that being said, I move that we table this.
All second. Motion to table one second. Motion by Mr. McInley and a second by Mr. Wolovich.
Comment on, no, okay. Not on the table? Okay.
All right, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lasavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Motion is tabled. All right, motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Kimberly Karavich versus Luzern County at all.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolovich, second by Mr. Venus. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wolovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lasavage?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the resolution confirming the appointment of the head of Administrative Services. Entertain a motion.
Get to state the salary.
For the, to state the name of the individual and his salary. I'm sorry, what are, what is the motion on? Entertain a motion to insert the name of the individual with the salary. Motion, Venus.
No, we need to provide a name.
Provide the name and salary. Okay, so it would be... Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion, so.
I'll make the motion for Jennifer Pecora's salary of $94,500.
Motion. Second. Second. All right, we have to open this up to public comment now. The motion for $94,500 for Ms. Jennifer Pecora. Is there any public comment?
Yeah. Basically, from what, I don't know a lot about this, but I think Walter Griffith did say it right, that anybody that should be open to public, and we should be able to talk to, email our, our county councilmen, and just have a little bit of input since we are paying the salaries. I think he, I think he hit the nail on the head. I also think it's up to Mr. Robertson. He's the, we hired him to run the county, and I think he should have the same. I hope he hires and fires, and if he does a great job, I hope he, if he retires, and if he doesn't, and if he loses his job, it's all on him. That's okay. Not to last forever. Trust me, the arithmetic's life. But yeah, so just, I, I just think that, you know... But I think that full disclosure, I do think that this county, whether you're Democrat, Republican, white, black, I just think that there's a lot of side deals that have been behind doors, and I think we're all frustrated with that. And I think that, I, I do hope that, you know, everybody, you know, sticks together with that, that we, the people, whether we agree on stuff and don't, we can agree on transparency and getting us involved, being honest and forthright, and, and letting, listening to the public a little more, instead of just unilaterally doing it and shoving it down our throats. That's all. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raivo speaking.
Mr. Raivo, hold on, there's another member of the public which stood up for you. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I second this gentleman.
I apologize, you're naming your Ms. Palat again, sir.
Ian Rolison, Wright Township, up top, Pennsylvania. I second the gentleman who spoke before me. I agree, no matter what your stripes are, I think many of us are very frustrated with our political parties and our elected officials and whatnot. So I think a little bit of transparency from our elected officials goes a long way towards instilling trust and confidence, and I guess, on your end, frankly, I think it increases your chances of being elected again, even if it's a slightly unpopular decision, if you justify it, but are transparent about your decisions. I think, you know, we get a sense of, you know, who you are, what your values are, you know, that kind of stuff. The fact that you think that this is in the best interest of the community. I know most of us are used to the whole double talk and, you know, subterfuge kind of thing, and if you prove that you're not of that type, then I think you really, you know, earn a lot of respect among members of the community, and we are happy to side with you. So, thank you for your time.
Mr. Raivo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like, I would just like to say about the vetting process, or ask about the vetting process. Maybe Miss Manager Robertson, or a member of his administration can clarify, but as far as the vetting process goes, was this, was this vetted thoroughly in terms of all applicants, in terms of any kind of... Because if I'm, if I'm correct, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this the same person who's, who's the Butler Township manager? Because if it is, I, I'm very concerned that we won't have the same kind of calam, the county won't have the same kind of calamity as they've experienced recently with the hiring of the Wilkes-Barre City Council Chairwoman, who also happens to now be Deputy Director, even though there's, I mean, it's kind of like the fox guarding the hen house, so to speak, when it comes to, you know, hiring a person who's on the municipal end, but this is apples to apples. She's an employee of the municipality, not an elected official, which is the contention, point of contention with the Wilkes-Barre City Council Chairwoman. So I would like to ask if this is the same person, and if this, the vetting process was, was done, maybe Mr. Skeen, Solicitor Skeen can chime in on that as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Raivo. Any other members of the public? Before I have members of council speak, Mr. Robertson, would you like to speak on this matter?
Me happy to. Ms. Pecora, would you stand up? Ladies and gentlemen of the public, this is Ms. Jennifer Pecora. I'm not going to try to get into the weeds with every individual, 319,000 people that she will represent. She was thoroughly vetted, triplely vetted by outside citizens, CEO level, at my understanding, and then internal with not only 360, which means people who would work for her actually got to vote for her. We started with a worldwide, nationwide announcement. I believe we had over two dozen applicants from across the United States. That was narrowed down to four that got interviews, and from there, a handful got second interviews, and Ms. Pecora was unanimously selected through that process by a whole host of people. Contrary to rumor mill, and I guess maybe I substantiated when I do that, Ms. Pecora has offered to relinquish her elected position before taking this job. So maybe the rumor mill should be kept to a minimum, because some things... And as to the process, I absolutely agree. I've had a discussion with council. I think the process stays. Quite candidly, I think if they worked for me, I should be able to hire them, and I should be able to tell you who I hire. In that context, I think I agree with one of the members of the public. But that's not the charter, so I respect the charter. But unfortunately, in this day and age, in the process, we have discovered, it's about 45 days here, that if it goes to the public and she is not confirmed, then if the council doesn't confirm, then she's left high and dry because her supervisors now know she has been offered another job. So we have a catch-22 in that process, and we're trying to work through that for both best of you and the best that we can do too. So Ms. Pecora has our, my high confidence in her, but she, she has a lot to learn, and as you can tell, she's young. So she's ambitious, and she's driven, and I believe she'll do a great job for you, council, and you citizens. If we give her a chance and we don't ask her what party, or what color, or what creed, or what religion she is, we just know we look for the best qualified. Thank you, Ms. Pecora. Do you have anything, Bill?
Any members of council?
Yeah. I want to echo the comments earlier, Mr. Griffith. I believe he's 100% accurate when he, he did say we need more transparency in the county. And I respectfully disagree, Mr. Robertson, with your comment that we don't, it's catch-22. We don't want to vet that out there because of our current employer. It is the nature of government. It's always been the nature of government statewide, countywide, federally. I think the public and county council members need to be more aware ahead of time, and not 20 minutes before we came out here tonight. That's when I found out the salary. And not twenty minutes before we came out here tonight, that's when I found out the salary. And there's other issues surrounding that, which I don't want to get into, but, uh, this is nothing personal yet to piss Ms. Pacora, I'm sure she's a. Very fine person, I hope she doesn't take it personally, but Mr. Griffith accurately described the process, when he said. We can vote to confirm or not to confirm, and if we vote to not to confirm. The county manager still has the ability, uh, to go ahead and hire, that's not up to county council. So, uh, having said that, I just truly wish in the future, we would have more ahead of time than what we had tonight.
Any other council members?
I'd like to speak if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. McInley.
First of all, and this is very unusual, I do agree with Mr. Griffith. I think we should have, you know, I know there's a problem with having a name out there. But I think it's the right thing to do, and I think the salary should also be out there, because it is an expense for the county. And it's a budget expense, so I think both of those things, we'll take it. I, you know, made the motion for this young lady to be appointed, a little vote in the affirmative, but I do have some issues with the way things were done. And like Mr. Thornton indicated, I hope that we can work through this and come up with a system, procedure. That's been a little transparent, number one, and also more involvement as far as budgetary issues. So. That's my comment, uh, you know, this is the manager's recommendation. You know, council has no part in that recommendation, and I appreciate the fact that manager comes to us for confirmation. But I also think that he is the leader of the county. By a vote of council, majority of council, so he should have his leadership, he. That he thinks is the best leadership. Whether I believe that or not, that's a, that's my personal situation, but I want the manager to make that decision because that's his team that he has to work with. Thank you.
Again, a coach needs assistant coaches, can't have a team with just one person. So it's, it's vital that we have somebody that can work with the manager, somebody that's going to be close, somebody that can talk to, somebody that he can relate to. Somebody who he can work with diligently to get things done in the county, but again, I do have the agreement with Thornton, Mr. Griffith, and Mr. McInley, we do need transparency on this counter. This has been an issue in the past, this is why we came to Homehold, because of transparency, so I think moving forward, we do need to keep that in focus, I think that's going to be crucial. Again, I will be supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Robert.
Uh, past practice, anytime we confirmed a division head or anything denied one, because we have one denial after the day. It was always transparent, we had a resolution presented in front of us days in advance. Salary attached to it, uh, from a budget perspective, I know there was a range, that range may be above and beyond what we actually budgeted from. Uh, last year into this year, numbers, so, you know, I, obviously there are some cost savings that. When you have a position on the bill for so long, money's sitting there, but it's not appropriate amount of cash for that position. So come October, when the new budget is presented to us, that higher number has to be presented to us. Uh, using Walter's words, it's a gun to the head in town, where we're always, uh, raising salaries. Uh, exponentially here, since we had Homehold in place, I know, uh, Father to Commissioner, we got to pay forty-two thousand dollars a year. Uh, whether that's right or wrong, it's different, you know, you got three commissioners making that amount, uh, that random. Just fine, um, what we are seeing is this Homehold has become much more costlier, and more expensive. Government here, services haven't really changed, annually we're doing the same services and the same departments. When I voted for Mr. Robertson, in affirmative, I wanted a change agent, I want someone that's going to. Ensure that we have good number twos in place, I do want to give him a chance. And I, I won't be voting for it tonight, you know, building on that trust relationship that we've talked about. My expectation, though, is, is that we still reorganize the county once he gets all his division heads in place, where it makes a little bit more sense. Where operational people are actually doing operations, or get, that people are doing actually admin work. I think, you know, let's build a foundation right now, get those building blocks in place, and then it's over.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Any other council members? Alright, do you have a motion in a second? Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
With no disrespect to Ms. Pacora, I'm voting no on a confirmation.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Will Overch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavag?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Pacora.
Thank you.
Motion to introduce the ordinance amending the administrative code at section seven point zero one A by adding section seven point zero one A one issuance of electronic equipment. Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Will Overch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavag?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
I guess. Introduced.
Okay, uh, motion to introduce ordinance amending the administrative code, adding section seven point zero three A, prohibitions, seven point zero three A one. Uh, election drop boxes in seven point zero three eight two, automatic section repealer of seven point zero three A one. So.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Robert, go.
First of all, let's clear the air here, uh, we are a constitutional republic. Democratic republic. The ordinance itself is not an outright ban on drop boxes, that we don't have that ability to ban the Dropbox as council members. However, we are the fiscal department of the county, we tie up various resources within the county just to go and. Pick up ballots, you know, I know the sheriff's department is heard for people. Uh, the administration arm of the election bureau, uh, they're usually short staffed. There's a lot of mistakes that are being made, uh, which have been publicized in the newspaper. Um, actually, you know, a bunch of them were publicized in the DA report that I have here in front of me. And I think those administrations, administrative individuals in the office need to read a little bit more. Uh, need to make sure that the ballots are correct, even before you vote, we've had votes for one. Issues where, you know, you should have had a vote for two, not a ballot. In fact, we've had very township, we've had people in the wrong districts being voted on, you know, what's their recourse? Do we go out and put the machines out again a second time, because people in the office have failed for three? So Ms. Williams commented, there are no orders given by myself, I can't give orders to. Uh, collectively, we are like the board of directors, we can set policies for the executive branch, and this ordinance does that. The Board of Elections, under title twenty-five, they can handle their own fiscal affairs, it's not the law. You know, there is a potential conflict in the law with the division head of administration giving the automatic clerk to the board. Where part of the law states that the Board of Elections can choose their own clerk, well. And I think I'm going to propose a change in that very soon too, to remove, um, Ms. Pacora as the. Uh, clerk to the board, because we as council cannot do that. But it was done in the past, and I don't think it was vetted proper through the office law, uh, because it, under title twenty-five, under one of the powers and duties, they can't choose their clerk. They can actually hire their own employees, so, you know, we're throwing the ball back at them. In a sense where I'm throwing the ball back in to the Board of Elections hands, they want to create, hire seasonal part-time individuals to take the drop boxes out. Let them do it, they have the ability to create a budget, the true process should be, they discuss what their needs are to conduct the election. They should hand that budget to Mr. Robertson, uh, county manager, and then he presents that budget to us in October. Which in Congress is their request. It's unique to us because it takes seventeen individuals to do what three people do in the majority of all the other counties throughout the country. And when people say, um. They want, you know, people. Sort of protection and uniform, uniformity in laws, when you have different times, when the drop boxes are open in Pittsburgh Library versus Hazleton. That's not uniform, that's not equal. You know, people work till maybe five, six, seven o'clock at night, they, maybe there's a case, and the drop box is closed in case. Are they going to jump in their car and drive their ballot all the way up to Pittsburgh Library, they might be still open, vice versa. Um, we were promised that security cameras would be trained on those boxes. But we may not have access to the video footage because we don't own those cameras.
Hi, how are you? I'm here to pick up a package for Mary Jo Griffiths.
Mr. Griffith, please, uh.
Do I have what?
Please mute yourself.
Uh, let me see if I do have, she sent me a text.
Walter, we see here, please mute yourself.
You know, the receptacles, they probably drop box.
Just gotta unlock my phone before I can get anything, don't I? Duh.
Walter, can you mute yourself? Mr. Griffith. I T, you guys, uh.
Can you mute in the back? Did you mute this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue, Mr. Robert.
Thank you, uh, drop boxes are, are, you know, the, the other name for a drop box is a secure receptacle, that's what the Department of State calls them. And that's secure receptacle, it should be uniform, you know, so my, my, uh, premise of this is just to make sure that we have a secure, fair election. That means fairness in time. Time opening, not just be putting, you know, like, put, right now, they put drop boxes in selective areas, you know, uh. Is it feasible to just stick in all democratic cities versus spreading them out in one of these Republican areas? You know, if you're going to do a drop box here in Lurin County, why not then do seventy-six of one in every municipality? You know, um, so it's not trying to make it harder, but it is, I want the Board of Elections to actually do their job, secure the process, do it the right way. Make it fair and equal, fair times. Keep them open, um, for a limited amount of time, you know, maybe two weeks. And then have them open consistently at the same time, each day, Monday through Friday, or Sunday through Saturday, whatever they decide. But having one place closed at five, and another place closed at four thirty, that's not even, it's not even uniform, I mean, the Constitution, as Mr. Raivo stated tonight. Uh, and also myself, at the last meeting, says that, you know, the conduct of elections shall be uniform. Well, certain counties are doing drop box, or utilizing drop boxes, and others are, it's not uniform across the state or across the province. We truly have sixty-seven different elections in the Commonwealth of the United States. Drop boxes were never written explicitly into law, judges adjudicated, they said they, they can or. Can, uh, can be used, or we decided that they're not being used, so. Our only mechanism is council, is to sort of pull away our resources. I just say, you know, I know the Sheriff's Department, they deliver civil paperwork, they transport prisoners. You know, they're, to utilize them to go babysit drop boxes for two weeks is taking them away to do their main court function. You know, the chain of custody issue, there are a lot of different issues that I can talk about. Right, and I think there is a problem, you know, with security, and, and people say that there's no front, there's active investigation. Right now, we've heard about it, but you fail to realize, or you don't want to admit it to yourself, that, that those investigations are there. And quite honestly, if I was county administration, I probably want to stay away from elections and Board of Elections. Let them have their own baby and, and deal with it, totally, because. Under law, the Board of Elections is a quasi judicial board, they have the power to adjudicate those, they have the power to. Take on registration challenges, they serve two core functions, um, when they. Really, they are the. Board of Registration, really, it's, it's an admin function, they can assign people to do that function. I've never once seen them take a vote, you know, to actually authorize county management to touch the shore system. Touch the state system that's actually registered voters, so in essence, to me, in my mind, procedurally, they're run by TI. Just because we have a department, and we call it the Bureau of Elections, um, did they convey that proper power to those individuals? To be able to do the work that's necessary to register voters in the proper mechanism, uh, with the proper tools, I mean, if I was to come to Board. Registrations and elections, you know, to give any one of you the power that, to actually touch the system. That should be a public vote, in twenty-twenty, there were two individuals that signed attestation as the clerk to the board of, of. The Board of Elections, those two individuals were never voted on to be the clerk to the board. Unofficial documents that, that had the race seal, Lurin County, that went down, these were result documents that went down to the Department of State. Once again, if we never convey power to share it, to be our clerk, we can't just put Matt Mitchell's name in to fill in for her. If we don't vote on it collectively, it's public, so, you know, this is trying to educate the public. On, on the various facts, and, you know, I, I have to read election law all the time, so, um. If it's not written explicitly in the law, it's really not the law, yeah, maybe judges can say, use them. And, and we're not here to try to take away your right to vote, I want everybody to vote, vote honestly, vote, you know, one person, one vote, not. One person, six votes, stuff in the box. I hope some people are prosecuted, that might be ballot harvesting, because that's illegal here in Tennessee. And like I said, this is actually too, this ordinance is just an introduction, it's not an outright ban, it's just having to throw the ball back at the Board of Elections, let them. Responsibly do their job, we have a big team there, they're very dynamic, I was the one that offered to get them computers. You know, uh, under the previous county manager, took them two months to get their computers, so that's why I codify it, because they are very active working group, I want to see. Them be successful, I don't want to see the black guys. You know, given to Lurin County each and every time we have, you know, I don't want to continue to see directors of election leave, I don't want to see deputy directors leave. Um, but we have to have a secure process in place, and the only way we're going to have a secure process in place is to talk about it. And to make sure that we donarize and prosecute teams under, uh, James, um, I think that, you know, I, I want it to be fair, I want it to be equal. Kind of, you know, Sheila, and I served on the, the Election Integrity Commission, or, or, but they were at the time only used like one drop box. You know, and that, I think that was within county property, where we have a camera trained on it. Whereas they've recently expanded the use, and I, and like I said last time, go out and get an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Or some type of cooperation agreement with those entities that own those cameras, so we have rights to the footage. Because guidance says that we should be keeping that footage for sixty days after the certification of election, and that's Department of State guidance, so. You know, there's a lot to learn, uh, and you need to know the facts, and yes, this is our only mechanism, because as a majority. We set policy for the county manager and his staff, not by one, but by a majority, and I'll end with that.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Do you want to come up and continue your comments that you were making before?
Sure, thank you, Drew.
Um, yeah, first, I just, just want to clarify one thing that was just said, that if. Sort of correlation was drawn between staff spending time picking up ballot drop boxes and errors that were made in the ballot proofing process. The ballot proofing process occurs. The ballot proofing process occurs weeks, if not months, in advance of the ballot drop box process. So staff, these, these two are not in any sort of temporal conflict with each other, they don't happen at the same time. So, you know, staff are picking up, staff are helping out with drop boxes, the ballot proofing has been done for, for weeks at that point. They're picking up ballots that are already, already printed. So, and this is just pertaining to, to last week, July twenty-sixth, there was, this is where I left off last time, and feel free to cut me off, so I, I, I thank you for your time, so. There's a question about whether or not mail ballots can be scanned more than once and whether ballots can be scanned more than once. So the mail ballot return envelope does have a barcode on the outside. When that's scanned into the system, that's what validates that this is about, that's part of the universe of ballots that was mailed out during this election. So there's a, it's called a correspondence ID, it's unique to each voter in each election, that's how we know that this is the ballot that was mailed to Michael Susick. And this is the same mail ballot packet that's coming from Michael Susick. It can't be scanned more than once, once it's scanned into the system, we know, know that. That ballot that went out of sort of the electronic box in our office went back into the electronic box in our offices, you know, I have vote credit now, I can't vote again. Regarding the open district attorney, district attorney cases, I respectfully disagree that there's three active open cases of election fraud right now. At this point, I haven't even met with the district attorney regarding the issues from the primary election in two thousand and twenty-two. So we don't know whether, what kind of investigation is going to occur, we don't know whether there's going to be any charges filed, we don't know whether the court's going to hear it. So to say, I hope people get arrested. I, I know, I don't appreciate hearing that, but sorry, this is something, I apologize. You know, but there, there are three incidents, and those three incidents have been reported to the district attorney, but there's not three active cases of voter fraud going on in, in Luzerne County right now. I know issues about funding have come up. So. You also, regarding funding of the drop boxes. Council member had said last week that, to quote, we've always been quite honestly self-funded here in Luzerne County. I mean, we know that it's a standard practice to receive outside funding in elections, I mean, right now, we got a twenty twenty grant, the Help America Vote Act, Cares Act. Valued at a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, it's an open grant, so we do receive outside funding, if that's a consideration for the drop boxes, whether we use outside funding for. For the ballots, for the ballot drop boxes, it just, that is an established process. You know, and whether or not the Board is able to, to purchase ballots, to purchase drop boxes, if that's under consideration. It's my understanding from conversations with solicitor that the Board of Elections and Registration does not have a budget and does not make purchasing decisions, so. That just needs to be brought under consideration. There's also a question regarding damaged, damaged ballot boxes last election. What happens if there's a car accident and those ballots get crushed and destroyed, then what, nobody's thinking about the totality of the entire process? So just to clarify, one ballot drop boxes are not brought back with ballots in, and the ballots are, are emptied from the box and put in transfer bags by sheriff's deputies. Who drive them back in their patrol vehicles. In any kind, in any election, you have contingency planning, so if, if ballots were destroyed for any reason, if, whether it was a car accident, ballots that are being brought back to us. A fire at a polling place, a weather emergency, you know, we would work with the solicitor in the state and the courts to come up with a remedy. So, you know, it's, we do contemplate continuity of processes, we do contemplate that we need emergency and contingency planning, so. You know, if ballots were just destroyed, it's, we don't, you know, it's not just a throw your hands up in the air kind of situation, we would work with the state and the courts to, to make sure that we provide a remedy to those. To those voters. So I just, I just, I just want to clarify those things, I know they were brought up at the last meeting, so if they're coming into consideration from, from council. So clarify, or at least give my, and I know the, the. The question of fraud, that, that may be my interpretation, council members may, may disagree, so I just submit that respectfully, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sussa, Mr. McGinley.
I have several things I'd like to mention. Number one, I believe the county has a responsibility to run a fair and honest election. The county, not the election board, not the election department, the county. So I think it's very difficult for us to give up that obligation, I think is there. Number two. We may be according to the possibility of disorder, some volunteers are going to take the. Boxes out, maybe collect them, I'm not quite sure, we still have the liability. Those are our boxes, we're taking them out, we went through them, we said they're going to be out in certain spots. That's our, that's our responsibility, liability. And if we give that up, what's our insurance company going to say, I know what they're going to say, no. As far as collection of the ballots, nowhere in that ordinance is any mention of collection of the ballots. I heard from Mr. Susick and some other people that the sheriff's deputies have done that. And I think that's worked out very well, plus the fact there's two people who go out and do that. Do we rely on volunteers, we don't know if it's one or two, or somebody decides to do something with the ballots or collecting or adding. Unknown, that's an unknown factor. The ordinance, as Mr. Urban indicated, does not prohibit. Ballot boxes. Doesn't, he was very clear on that, and I think he's very great about that. So that's something I think that people have to recognize, this ordinance will not prohibit ballot boxes. Now, if people want to fight about the issue of having ballot boxes, I'm fine with that, but I don't want to go around the back door to do that. And the last, maybe most important is, I think this. Administrative code amendment ties the hands of the manager and day-to-day operations. Day-to-day operations means what's going to be going on as far as the election and how it's handled, and how the employees are involved with that. Well, I cannot support that, the charter is very clear, the council cannot be involved in day-to-day operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All very good points made tonight, two weeks ago, weeks before that, months before that, very valid points, everybody. My comments do not reflect here at all whether or not we should have drop boxes. Going to stick to the ordinance. We don't have the authorities, Mr. McGinnley, properly said, we don't have the authority of drop boxes, the county has drop boxes, we have them, they're not, we're not sending them, right? However. We absolutely have the statutory authority, as duly sworn council members here. To be proper stewards, fiduciaries of the public taxpayer money. We get to choose where that money goes in the county. And the fact remains that when the state judges decided that if you want to use drop boxes, go ahead, if you don't want to, that's okay too. That's not a mandate, that's not a mandate at council here. That we must fund with Luzerne County taxpayer dollars, we must fund a voluntary undertaking. A voluntary endeavor by our election board. I applaud our election board, I really do, I see the work they've done, very, very difficult, as is, are all the employees in the Bureau of Elections. Very difficult job, they're taxed beyond measure, and I thank them for that. However, as county council members who are sworn to be the proper stewards of taxpayer money. I don't know how we could all sit here. And could seriously consider voting taxpayer dollars to support the absolute discretionary. Endeavor, involuntary endeavor of the election board, they didn't have to do this, as many counties have not. And. I just want everybody to think about that when they're voting tonight, because consider this, whether you like drop boxes or not, the fact remains, probably half of this county. Admittedly hates drop boxes, it's bothering them, it's upsetting them, the other half absolutely loves them, they want a hundred of them, they want more. We are so deeply divided in this county over this issue, will it go away? Maybe, but it's never going to go away as long as we have these drop boxes in the county. So I'm not saying get rid of them or not get rid of them, I'm just saying, we don't have to sit here and fund with taxpayer dollars Luzerne County residents. Well, not that good state taxpayers, that Luzerne County dollars, we're funding these efforts. Now, to the points made earlier, one woman in the back earlier today was advocating to continue use of drop boxes, and she made a great point. Why does the county, county council concentrate more on improving our infrastructure needs? Absolutely, the money we would save for not paying all our sheriff's deputies running out for three, four weeks in and out, and our election workers. Inside the election bureau, they're trying to do all this extra activity with drop boxes that they never had to do before, prior to two years ago. Now they have to do it, and we're, Mr. Robertson has stated a hundred times over and over the last forty-five days. How short we are on workers and how hard it is to keep them, and now we give them tons more to do. The district attorney presented county council tonight with a very detailed, about sixty-page investigation of the twenty twenty-one primary election. And all of the problems and the issues that his office investigated, very interesting. And I'm not throwing stones at anybody here, because they have a very hard job, a lot of it occurred out of the polling places with election workers not properly trained. My point is, the people in the Bureau of Elections, they have enough to do, they have more than enough to do, and now we're making them go out and do this extra work. The ordinance says, no, we're just not going to fund that activity, that voluntary activity that the election board didn't have to undertake. So, to the, the threats that we are going to have lawsuits over this, I listen to that, I look into it, I research it. And I, my feeling is I'd be hard pressed to think any judge. In the land would come down and rule against legislators or sworn to properly direct taxpayer money towards. Mandated laws from the state or unmandated laws, in other words, voluntary activities that we didn't have to undertake. For them, for the judge to say, we are required to expend public funds to support that voluntary effort, I think is a stretch and it's a reach. It's not beyond judges today, they're going to do it, but there is no law right now supporting that effort right now, no. If the law comes along and the state mandates the use of drop boxes in the future, I will be the first one here on council. To make the motion to use taxpayer money to fund the proper distribution and collection of ballots and boxes out there, I'll be the first one. But right now, we don't have a law that's making us do that, we don't. So that's all I'm going to say on that, and the last thing I want to say is, to the people that continue to say here in public and on the wires. You know, you better watch what you do here, because if you're looking to be reelected in a couple of years, we're watching. I'll tell you, I don't know how the rest of these people feel, I've never governed or legislated from a position of fear. Threatening my job on county council is laughable to me, because I never made a decision in my other eleven years in public service, elected office. I've never made decisions for the public based on whether or not I'd get reelected, as a matter of fact, I made decisions that I was guaranteed by Congressman Kijorski, you'll never get reelected. That was the massive sewer project bills I put forward, and I got reelected two more times, I don't know why, but I did. But I, I will always make decisions based on what I feel is best for most or all of the people, not a small minority, but for most or all of the people. And I don't react to threats of not getting reelected, I just want to put that out there, thank you, Mr..
Very well said, Brian, and I appreciate everything you said, and Stephen, excellent work on which you did. But in my opinion, very, very simply is, we have an election board, and one of the many functions of the election board is to determine if we should use drop off boxes. They voted three, two could use them, was I happy? No, but I believe that's their function, and I believe we should stay in our lanes and not interfere with it. I understand Steve's ordinance does not stop the drop off box, but it certainly interferes with the process. I don't believe we should do that, and my personal opinion is, we should stay hands off of it. Regardless of the fact that I don't like to myself, it's their function and it's our function to stay away from that and essentially stay in our lanes. So I cannot support this with conscience.
Other council members?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott, go ahead.
I'm against voting for this ordinance because, as we've already talked about, it does not eliminate drop boxes. I'm against drop boxes, but this is not the way to go about trying to get rid of them. Maybe if all the voters were to go to the election board and ask them to get rid of them, then maybe they would do that, and I don't know, maybe people have already done that. But to me, this is, I'm against drop boxes, but this is not the way to go about getting rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott. I just want to add a couple of comments about this. You know, Mr. Urban, you and I kind of had a back and forth in the last meeting about what this does, what it doesn't do. And again, ad nauseam, I want to say I'm against drop boxes as well, and I feel compelled to vote for this based on that fact alone. But I do have a significant amount of issues with this because, again, it doesn't ban drop, drop boxes explicitly. I would much rather vote on a bill that does that and then take out whatever legal challenges we have based on that. You know, it still allows for the function of the drop boxes, which is a huge problem, you know, just because we can't transport them doesn't mean that the sheriff's deputies aren't going to still be able to go out and harvest the ballots. Say that term loosely, but collect the ballots and, and bring them back, so the, the drop boxes will still function, you're just, you're just eliminating, eliminating one very small piece of puzzle. Of getting them there and you're, you're in fact like defying the election board to say, hey, you guys go do this yourself instead. I think, you know, knowing the members of the elections board, they're, they're going to find a way to do it. And I do believe that this is going to open us up to litigation. But as I said in the outset, you know, I do feel compelled to support this, but I do think it's a bad piece of legislation. And just to go back to the elections board for a minute, I'm actually, you know, would like to add that I'm very disappointed in the elections board itself for not addressing a lot of these problems. The voters continuously speak at your meetings about the problems that they have with drop boxes, with mail-in voting, with other things, and I think that there's a lot of inaction there. So, Ms. Williams, I, I'm sure you're listening, you need to fix that, you need to make us trust these elections. All right, if you want to keep these drop boxes, at the very least, I'd like to see security cameras there. You know, I, I understand that there might be this idea of voter intimidation if there's a person there, but I don't think a security camera is going to prevent voter intimidation or is going to cause voter intimidation. I mean, you know, this has been approached in the, in the complete wrong way. And again, I'm against drop boxes, so I do feel compelled to support this just based on that fact alone. But I, I don't necessarily think that this is a positive piece of legislation that's actually going to do what we want it to do if we don't want drop boxes.
Any other discussion? All right, call the question, Ms. Lawrence, roll call.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Success, it's introduced.
All right, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the capital plan budget for Luzerne County.
Motion.
Sure.
Thor. Discussion.
Do you want to get us a table?
Kevin. Mr. Liscavich, you have, you have any discussion?
Say it now.
Okay, all right, all right, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Motion to allow Leonard Dalmas to advertise county-owned property for sale.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Please, Lawrence.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
No.
All right, motion regarding the former juvenile detention center property. First, we have a motion to remove it from the table. Motion in a second. Any discussion on the removal from the table? All right.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Okay, it's removed from the table. A motion to adopt the resolution authorizing county manager to renegotiate the sales agreement between Luzern County and Castillo Real Estate LLC for the former juvenile detention center property.
On the floor.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I'm concerned with this potential sale of the property for a couple of reasons. One, I found out today that there is no contract of sale pending. And I also found out there's no active sales agreement out there. I understand whatever sales agreement was discussed expired at the end of twenty-twenty. And I am concerned, I have nothing personal against Castillo Real Estate or Attorney Tarrana or anybody. We're, we're facing a, a very big dilemma and challenge with our county prison right now, the main prison. And we're exploring different options of how we're going to correct that and fix it. It's a dangerous situation. We've lost lives over there. I'm not blaming anybody, but it's a, it's a, it's a bad building and something needs to be done. This subject property is near it, next to it, and it could possibly be used as part of the solution for that massive county problem we're facing. And I'd like to look into that or explore that possibility before we go ahead and just get rid of that property. Because I, I'm fearful that we get rid of this property for a medial amount of money. And then we have to come up with, you know, five hundred thousand or a hundred million or whatever somewhere else to fix our prison problem. So I, I understand it stands on two acres of property, which is nothing to sneeze at. And, uh, and there's other property around it. There's a retail space right below it of approximately an acre, which could possibly be required if that was a solution to the prison problem. So I'm not, for those reasons, I'm not in favor of supporting the motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
May I, you heard, I'm Joe Tarran, I represent Castillo Realty. Mr. Thornton, I would ask you to turn to your solicitor and ask if there is in fact a contract that's signed and involved. And I think it's very ironic that you just had a discussion about advertising county property. And I know Mr. Urban presses the hell out of me because he's trying to turn this county into a business and have it run like a business. Business would never do what you guys are doing, never do what Mr. Thornton is doing. This county decided, Mr. Castillo wasn't looking, Mr. Castillo wasn't doing a side deal, he wasn't putting guns to anybody's head. The county put out for bid that property. There was one bidder, Mr. Castillo, fifty thousand dollars because the people that you had go in there couldn't even go in there without full hazmat suits. You found out that it's going to cost you a million dollars just to be able to walk in the building before you do anything else with it.
Well, I didn't find that out.
Well, your county did, and you. And now today, you're, you're saying we've gone through, we've gone through three different administrations, three different managers. We started out with, with, uh, with one, we found out that we couldn't go through, we found out through our due diligence, which was a part of the process, that we were going to go, that we were checking the sewer. We found out the sewer is defective, it needs work. We waited, the, the prison board told us we can't have private easement through that property. So we're going to have to figure out another way. The other way that we figured out, that, that the county figured out, was that the county had to pay eighty-six thousand dollars to dig the sewer line around the prison. And we found out that Mr. Castillo was willing to, and Castillo property is willing to take that on himself for a reduction of thirty thousand. Now, what's, now you're listing other properties. What are you going to do in five years, say, oh, wait a minute, we want this property that we advertised for sale last week, we might want it someday because we might get a billion dollars to build a new prison on the, on the.
Absolutely not, no. But right now, that property is right next to Jason.
And that property's been sitting there since I've been working in Wilkes-Barre for thirty years, empty.
Right, correct.
And there's nobody, and you're never going to use it, and you know that you, you don't have an asset, you have a million dollar.
Well, I can argue with you on that. That's just my opinion, Attorney Tarrana.
Well, your opinion should be what happens. You said, you said there's no agreement to sell, effective agreement to sell. I'm sorry, maybe you read it today or you looked at it today, but I would ask you, Attorney, if you have a real agreement.
I would disagree with you when you say we'll never use it. Okay, you don't know that. All right.
I know that you did a study and you decided to put it out for bid, and you decided, and you decided that Mr. Castillo was granted that bid.
I don't want to discuss.
And I, I'm, Mr. Castillo has expended a lot of money to figure out if he could use it. And now you want to pull that back and say, oh, wait a minute, maybe we do want this prison that's been sitting up on that hill for twenty years rotting.
Right.
And let me just take a breath because I do want to say something personally here for Mr. Lombardo, because I'll finish up with this, but my heart broke when we were talking about the, uh, the fire and nest effect because when I, when I get a little choked out of water, Mr. Lombardo lost an uncle when I was young and I was saying, I call my family to the Italian circus, about thirty of us get together every Saturday, Sunday at my, my mom's house. And, uh, Mr. Lombardo's uncle's grave was right next to us and it seemed like the macaroni, my mother was just bringing out the macaroni when your dad and mom would pull up and just sit at his grave for years and years and years. Thank you for your family's sacrifice and nest effects. And I'm sorry to end with that, but I was really touched here when I was listening to, listening to you say that you're a first responder, assuming that what your family has already sacrificed, that's something, something to say. So thank you.
Any further discussion on that?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. McGinn.
I wasn't going to. I toured that building. Saw the condition of that building. And saw what was inside that building that had been dumped there over the years. God bless us. That's a terrible situation. You don't know what's in that building that they're going to have to deal with possibly. I would hope that it's not going to be detrimental, but I'm sure it's going to require a lot of cleanup and everything else. And all the systems in that building are going to need some kind of improvement. The heating system, electrical system, the storage system, whatever. We've had that property for many years. I don't know if it's twenty years it's closed. It's been closed for several years for sure. We're not going to use that property, not going to rip down that mountain that it sits on so we can bring it into the prison. If we have to go to the prison and expand it, which I'm, I'm in favor of doing something with the prison, we certainly can go to the left side of that prison where we own most of that property and we can provide an addition or whatever the proper word is to meet the needs of the prison. This gentleman, Mr. Castillo, who I really don't know, made an offer. The council accepted that offer. I think we have an obligation to follow up on what the council did. We did have an offer years ago for that property. And that offer was twenty thousand dollars. So in light of everything that's been said, and I respect everybody for their opinions, but I don't think this is the solution to our problems as far as prison. But I do think we have an obligation to follow up and do the right thing here. Mr. Castillo.
Thank you, Ms. McGinley. Any other members of council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. McDermott.
Somebody else has not been.
Well, I don't know who to process.
There's a council.
All right, you're good.
So we've been working on this since November, in twenty twenty, November, council passed a resolution to sell this property to Mr. Castillo. It's been almost two years and he's been working on it, dealing with all the problems and has been in constant contact with the county. I understand, Mr. Thornton, that if this didn't happen, it could very well be a possibility for a prison expansion. But that's not the case. That's not where we are. And I really do think that's a big pipe dream that would, we could be able to put the prison there. Who knows? But we don't have the time to figure that out now. And we've already wasted almost two years on this. Both parties acted in good faith, and I think it would be horrible for the county to back out of it at this point.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott. Just to echo those comments, again, it's, it has been two years. Mr. Castillo has been acting in good faith. And this, I think, is something that we don't want the county to be known for, is backing out on our, on our deals and our promises, especially when we're doing any type of contracts. You know, it makes people not want to do business with us. And, um, you know, to the point about the prison, I understand that a thousand percent. And I know that we need to do prison, and we have been actively looking for options since the day that we were sworn into office. But this option has not come to the table until the last thirty days, at least as far as I'm aware. And that's where I have an issue. At the eleventh hour, we're now having this backwards discussion about, oh, wait, maybe we want to use this property. I know that you already did all this work, but, you know, we, we want it now. So that's just not a good way to do business, in my opinion. And I, I support this a hundred percent. I, I think that Mr. Castillo has done a great job with the community. He's an upstanding member. And I think he's going to do a good job with this property as well, so. Any other members of council? Or question?
Just one question for you. Can we have maybe some type of agreement that your client will look to ensure that the proper security and people that are vetted, that use his property be vetted thoroughly so we don't have problems in prison? And I may make that part of the agreement contingent, you know, on the county's behalf, the attorneys work out the details that, you know, security will be one of the sticking points of the agreement. Because obviously, you know, prison has concerns of contraband, you know, getting off the fence. So, and we don't want that on anybody to possibly throw any drugs over the fence, so. I mean, that's, that's a concern of mine, just from a security perspective. So I guess, you know, if you have tenants, please vet them thoroughly. And, you know, do whatever it takes to make sure that we don't have problems. I know you negotiated in good faith, you probably spent a ton of money. I don't know what that amount is. You know, maybe you should indulge just the amount. So we know, you know, the land was, was that, that was subdivided already for my Wilkes-Barre city.
Originally.
Right. So you vetted it. So, I, you know, you negotiated in good faith based on the time. You, you spent a lot of energy doing it. You know, it, it's a hard decision because, yeah, from this, from the county's perspective, my only concern is really the security issue. I don't, I don't want to back out of the deal that we can't in the past, but I, I agree. You can promise us, do your best to make sure whoever you put in there as a tenant. And I'll take your word for that.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. There's no other comments. Before we call the questions, we'll need a dollar amount in the point line.
Would that be an amendment to the motion to put a dollar amount?
Yes. So we'll need an amendment to add a dollar amount that now therefore be resolved line.
Mr. Chair?
I'd like to, thirty thousand dollars, be free on thirty thousand, just take thirty thousand. I'll make a second to that.
Second on thirty thousand dollars? Question, anybody?
There's a question. Wasn't the amount fifty thousand?
Originally, you're correct. But because of the sewer issue, which is a big, correct if I'm wrong. And the last time you said it was like almost thirty thousand dollars to put the sewer line in. County had sought, it's closer to ninety thousand dollars. Mr. Castillo has absorbed that. And that's why he's requesting a reduction, but he should not the whole amount that paid for the sewer. Am I correct?
To the property which sold for how much?
On the question, do we give a guarantee on the property?
Who's that?
Mr. LaScavitch.
Okay.
What does mean guarantee?
Go ahead. Mr. LaScavitch, can you clarify that?
Did we guarantee the property for the sewer line? We bought the Hazuri home and we found out that the air conditioning, you know, it's going to cost fifteen grand and we have no recourse there at six hundred and fifty thousand. So why are we reducing the amount?
Is the property sold as is? Was there provision in there that if they fight?
The sewer line was not revealed to the wires, from my understanding.
Neither was the air conditioning at Hazuris. We bought it as is.
Air conditioning, where?
The fifteen.
No.
The problem at the sewer probably, problem is going to cost us fifteen thousand, so.
If I may speak, the issue isn't the sewer itself, it's the fact that the prison and the county will not let a sewer go through. So it is not a matter of there's a defective air conditioning system. Is there, there is a mandate by the county for us to spend thirty, twenty-six, thirty thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, I, I won't, I won't support this. I won't support this unless it goes for fifty grand. And the reason for that, it appraised back at seventeen for one thirty-three. So you're getting a deal.
One thirty-three appraisal? Anybody know?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Appraisal?
Yes, back in, back in two thousand and seventeen, the property was appraised for a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So let's be fair and do it at fifty because we all know the property values have skyrocketed.
So is the environmental cleanup cost? In one of the, I, I grew up in St. Marcos Church, there's a brand new, there's a school that's been used continuously by the LIU, and they sold that for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That's one of the terrible.
Well, we had the Hitchner Building in West Pitts, it was ten times worse.
All right, there's, there's a motion in a second on thirty thousand dollars. Ms. Lawrence, roll call.
Mr. LaScavitch?
No.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch, excuse me. Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, two, no. It's amended to thirty?
Okay. The amendment is for thirty, and now we'll be voting on the resolution, or the, the, the motion to adopt a resolution at thirty thousand dollars.
We had a first by Mr. Thornton and a second, excuse me, a first by Ms. McDermott and a second by Mr. McGinley. Does that stand with the amendment?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Roll call then?
Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch?
Mr. LaScavitch? It looks like you, it looks like you just got a little quicker. It's not longer.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Resolution passes. All right, number ten, uh, letter of support for the White Haven Center, which was moved from the work session to the voting agenda.
Move second.
You're welcome.
Any discussion?
All right, go ahead.
All right, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. McDermott?
I think she was.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter.
Go ahead. No, that's fine. You're good.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Just a comment on that. When we sent the previous letter, I think this one probably have a copy. I think the signature page.
Yes.
Had everyone's signature, all the members of council.
I didn't have that in because it was just.
I understand what I'm saying, though, is people on council now are going to have to get to you.
Well, I can do it during the work session.
And that's fine.
That sounds good. It's on the page anyways. All right, we'll move into public comment on non-agenda items.
They have one from Miss Brandon.
Oh, that's right, we do. I apologize, Mr. Susan. Just one second. We have one from Ms. Brannon, Cindy Brannon. Dear council members, please work to find out when weeks will be trimmed on roads such as Whiteburn. Mr. Plesh continues to give our committee fix our road in Loser County. Inaccurate work schedules and promises that never transpire week after week. We understand there is only a crew of nine in Roden Bridge. This is for the whole county. Please request the Roden Bridge either outsourced entirely or major funding, manpower, and resources be immediately addressed. This has become a serious emergency. Safety and liability should never be risked by our county. On behalf of FORLC, we respectfully ask that no road bridge work be asked for assigned to work or concert venue, perform landscaping duties for county-owned buildings and properties, clean up along the river, or move office furniture for any department of our county government. FORLC also asks that all work needed be amply advertised, including outside our county, for all interested parties to bid on. And any maintenance or roadwork be assigned, purchase orders, or transparency and tracking. Thank you, Cindy Brannon. We also have one slip that was filled out. Jacqueline Ruffsech.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Ruffsech Norris. I'm a resident of Larksville. I'm also a member of Put People First PA, it's a, and their northeast PA Healthcare Rights Committee. It's a politically independent organization that is statewide. We have members across urban and rural communities with five regional healthcare rights committees. I'm also a member of what is called the Medicaid Nonviolent, the Nonviolent Medicaid Army with members across thirteen states here in the country. I'm also a two thousand and nine graduate of Loser County Community College's nursing program. And I've been working in this area ever since I graduated. I'm here today regarding the closure of First Hospital and regarding county's council search to build a newer, bigger prison. It's no accident that these two things are happening at the same exact time. Mental health and addiction services have been long underfunded in this area, especially in this city and across our nation. Due to the refusal of healthcare corporations to invest in mental health services, our community has never had adequate mental health resources in this area. Long before the pandemic, we had still had a drug epidemic destroying families and communities. Before COVID have ever happened, we had, and continue to have, a pediatric mental health crisis in this country. But because investing in the people's mental health was not profitable enough, healthcare corporations refused to meet our needs. Instead, they drive hospitals into the ground, then dump the problem on someone else. We often hear people mention personal responsibility and personal accountability when speaking about those who suffer with mental illness and addiction issues. But not many people ever mention the accountability of healthcare corporations. Will they ever be accountable to the people? Will they ever take responsibility for meeting the healthcare needs of our communities? Or are we just going to keep letting them play musical, musical healthcare? When one drops out, we are left with just a little less healthcare. How convenient is that CHS sells Berwick Hospital to Fayette Holdings a while ago? Fayette Holdings now wants to turn Berwick Hospital into psych facility, and CHS is closing First Hospital right after their stock plummets. Doesn't this raise anybody's eyebrows? Rather than fighting healthcare corporations for better healthcare needs in all aspects, our community leaders are stuck spending time looking for a place to lock away the wounds of the poor and the working class, so we don't see the infection in the street. Out of sight, out of mind. Mental health care in prison? Forget about it. Prisoners don't get substantial mental health care resists or rehabilitation. We all know this. For someone who was incarcerated, their mental health, as well as their physical health, is neglected.
Thank you, ma'am.
Has it been three minutes?
Yeah.
Well, I would like for you to support Put People First, Pennsylvania's Healthcare Advocate Bill HB eighteen twenty-eight. And I'm asking that this council pledge their support for this, for the public healthcare office in the state of Pennsylvania that will be fused with the Attorney General's office to watch over all these corporate, all these corporations in healthcare, not only for profit but also not-for-profit. UPMC is also in the news right now for their own scandals.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And just as an addition to that, we did receive the communication from the CEO of Commonwealth that First Hospital would be closing. I can tell you personally that I, you know, will help in whatever efforts to keep it open. You know, I know there's other state legislators that are working on this right now. And I would hope that maybe at the next council meeting, we can bring this up as a discussion point, either on the work session, voting agenda, whatever, we'll send a letter of support, whatever, whatever we think is best. But I think I speak for most of us when we say we would like to see, you know, that facility stay open. Anybody else for public comment? Ms. Kruger, is this, are you for public comment for the meeting?
Hello again. My name is Kara Kruger. I am from Plains Township. I would like to propose something that may aid in one of the concerns raised pertaining to the coming election. After our last meeting, I thought a lot about the issues that were raised, in particular, one that was raised by Councilman Woolwich. Not calling you out, sorry. You said people said that they did not want to do the research, sample ballots are posted weeks ahead, and that this information is readily available. This is absolutely true. You're right. Yes, absolutely. So my point is that what about those individuals who do not know that or do not know how to access this information? I'm working on starting a campaign for the coming election. It's called Save Abortion PA. In doing so, I've hosted and attended many events where I speak one-on-one with voters from across this county and others about the importance of informed voting. During my rallies, I have dedicated speeches about how to find your local representatives, their voting history, as well as those who are up for election in your area. And I do this because the lack of knowledge in these topics in general is frankly unnerving. I don't care what candidate or party someone votes for, whether it be red, blue, or the purple flying fish brigade, as long as it is an educated choice and that people are making it and they're standing by it. At one rally, I asked somebody what voting district they're in, and their reply, America. Someone else, after seeing one of my signs, told me that they had no idea that politicians' voting records are public knowledge. I can reference many more incidents just like this. In my years of working in service to others, I have converged with a wide variety of intellectual abilities across this county and that it's home to. Accessibility for all is important in ways that extend past just the physical aspects. I'm telling you this because there's a gap in voter knowledge accessibility. And I would like to volunteer to help build something that can change that. A simple, unbiased how-to guide with instructions on how to navigate finding the information needed, on how to make an educated decision come time to visit the polls. This can be on a website, a poster, or possible classes at a community center or in a public place. Our county's, or our country's education system fails to do this in most classrooms. And this is why we need to aid this in bridging this gap. Perhaps with the help of the county cares team, or maybe, Mr. Susan, I need to be speaking with you about this. But I do need some help because I cannot fix this alone, although I am trying. I have done something similar to this already on a website that I've built in my spare time for my campaign. That's trying to save the rights to abortion in the Commonwealth. I did this at a level so that children in my fifth to sixth grade study group would be able to understand when I was a tutor. I also spend time one-on-one with voters who need help at my rallies. This tool can help hundreds of people make easier decisions. As well as encourage those who are discouraged by the complexity of the voting system to come out on election day and use their voice. I'm willing to volunteer my time because I feel all voices and opinions are important and valid. And they deserve to be heard. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate all the work you're trying to do. I think you should reach out to League Women Voters because they send out questionnaires to all candidates.
Yeah, awesome. I will definitely do that. Thank you. You guys have my information on behalf of the help for pretty.
Any other members of the public?
Yeah.
Mr. Susan?
So Randy asked if I would just say a few words, so I'd just like to.
I think you're up for the workshop part, right?
Oh, is there another? Yes, there is.
At least that's what we discussed.
Okay, yeah, I was confused. I didn't see. I'll hang tight.
You can have my place.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah. As a lot of people said, we're passionate both ways on drop boxes and election integrity. I spoke, I speak, you know, from the heart, probably uneducated as far as policies, legalities. And I've come up here and banded, like, we don't trust you guys. We don't trust the Election Bureau both ways. You know, I said, hey, you should hire half Democrats and half Republicans, and then it was told to me that that's illegal because you can't hire based on party affiliation. But I think that we could maybe ask people on the Election Bureau, how do you feel about drop boxes or not? Or do you think that, you know, because I would like to have it where I don't have to be here. A lot of people probably feel the same way. It'd be nice if we trusted the Election Bureau, but we don't either way. I think there's some things like Mr. LaBardo said very eloquently, Denise Williams has a lot to think about. And I think she needs to adjust instead of just being party, because that's what happens. We shove it down their throat, they shove it down our throat, and this is what we get. I think you should change the charter. The charter says, I believe, two Democrat, two Republican, and one of the same affiliation. Should be two Democrat, two Republican, and an independent or a libertarian. So you have two-two and a swaybo that once in a while goes this way. But right now, it's like, you know, it's like it was or have or has the biggest team wins. It's just, it's like that. It's so divided that we already know how the Election Bureau is going to vote. It's three-two. I've been to everyone. Three-two, 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 three-two. It's discouraging. And I think that the public and the young lady says something about posting stuff. Yeah, it's transparency everywhere. If we were more transparent and really came to the table and talked hands, maybe we wouldn't be so vehemently puking on each other. And that's what it really sounds like, and I think that it's got to start somewhere. And I know that, I think, you know, the rest of the places where the sheriff, we don't care if the Democrats or Republicans, we don't care if, and, you know. But honestly, an election bureau, the election thing, it does matter. Because if everybody is the same family, if you're all Crips, you're going to cheat. If you're all blood, you're going to cheat. If you're all them red or blue or whatever, you're going to, someone, the possibility of cheating, even if you don't cheat, the other side's going to think you cheat. Even if you don't. I think that it should be diverse. And have a split where you have not just eight Democrats working in that facility and one Republican. We should get some independence.
Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to correlate what was said in the voting meeting and also what is coming up in the work session about the drop boxes. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for doing their due diligence and listening to all sides. And I think what needs to happen is that the council needs to reach out, particularly the legislative committee needs to reach out to the state legislators in our delegation. Because this point of the drop boxes is a point of contention that needs to be sorted out with that body, with the state, not the counties. The county's only job is to run the elections on the behalf of the state. That is the job of the county boards and bureaus of election. Okay? Now, that being said, for all the people that spoke in regards to wanting drop boxes and mail-in ballots for convenience, that's not what was said in the September twenty-twenty Supreme Court ruling. It was said the health and safety of the voter was at risk due to the COVID pandemic. That is what the ruling was for the utilization of drop boxes. Now, Mr. Urban's ordinance does not withhold any kind of delivery of, or, excuse me, the prevention of the drop boxes, only the funding for the delivery. That funding should come from the state, not from the county. Okay, as Mr. Thornton's, so clearly pointed out that it was a voluntary voluntary means of, for the county to, for the county's board of elections to decide. Okay, so that being said, that needs to be addressed with the state. And if our county legislative committee would go out to the state, that would be fine. As far as the work session goes with regards to the infrastructure funding, why, you know, why wasn't the county redevelopment authority reached out to with respect to this work session item for the LSA infrastructure funding? I just don't understand why that is. If anybody could make any statement of clarification on that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public? Oh, go ahead, sir.
Name is Ian Rollison, Wright Township. Apologize about being a repeat offender. Hope to not make this a constant thing. I just wanted to say, since, you know, I don't usually get in the habit of going to meetings like this. One of the things that I keep track of is sort of the demographic data here for Loser County, because I grew up in northeast PA. I grew up at the border between Wayne and Pike. I went to Womfopak High School, graduated from there, went to college in Ohio, which was a mistake, I know. And then I joined the army afterwards, and then I moved around a lot afterwards. But the one thing that concerns me is northeast PA is sort of slowly dying in a lot of ways. And this area has always been home to me, and so I'd like to see it sort of grow and continue to have life and succeed. I kind of touched upon one of the things that I noticed earlier, and that is our population, we don't hang on to young people very well. And so as a result of that, the average age of people here is, you know, it's sort of continually getting older. And I mean, no disrespect to individuals older than thirty-two. But, you know, we need some, you know, vigor, which I don't have. You know, we need people more vigorous than me. And we also, I think, need to attract some people who have some economically powerful stimulating sort of jobs. And you folks would know how to do that better than I would. But one of the things that I did see, sort of courtesy of a political science class at Wilkes that I took, it was very eye-opening. The city of Portland, Oregon was a success story, and I used to work there at the BA. And the people there are crazy, a hundred percent, would not recommend it in terms of visiting there. But the city itself is a success story in terms of how they manage it. One of the things that I think worked out well for them, if I can remember correctly, was how they organize their zoning laws. And I don't know if that's something that you guys want to look into, but I really want this area to grow and to succeed economically. Because this area has always been home, so just wanted to toss that up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rollison. Feel free to apply to one of our authorities, boards, or commissions if you're interested in getting more involved. You can always use more people on those.
Especially young people.
Especially young people. Any other members of the public? All right, you're not all in motion to adjourn.
Regarding mental health, I think we got an email today from Ms. Hill. Talked about the funding, mental health. And I'd like to see council have some kind of resolution, letter, whatever, indicating that we don't need flat funding for mental health, we need to increase the funding. And we should approach our legislative group, who are at Harrisburg, make sure that they support that. I think that's very important. The young lady spoke earlier. The young lady spoke earlier, I think, and it's very valid points. I think anybody's written paper understands that there's some things happening with mental health that aren't very good. Number two, I'd like to congratulate and applaud the people who were involved with Rockingham River. Those three Friday evenings were very well received, they did a great job. Weather held up. Crowds were excellent. And I think that's a tribute to the people who were involved with marketing and type of entertainment they provided, et cetera. They did a great job. I don't know if Mr. Fitzgerald realizes, but we, once we appoint the two members who are Republican, two members Democrat in the Election Bureau, we're out of it. They get together and decide who their chairperson is. I don't know what the process is, I don't really care, because we're out of it. And I knew, know, and I've read, they've had interviews. Whatever they want to do, that's up to them. Finally, my, I will have a budget member prepared for next meeting, dealing with some of the salary situations that I think are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnley. Mr. Martin?
I just want to expand on your first point. Great point, and, and I would support that. So let's be, drill it down. Is someone going to prepare a resolution then?
I will, I will work with the Office of Law to make sure we have something.
To increase the mental health funding? And I, I think I read when they passed the state budget, did they, didn't they not increase funding for mental health across the state?
Said it was flat, according to what they.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Ms. Hill should speak about that in the workshop, in the work session. Okay. So I want more information on that shortly.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aye, aye.
On this day. We're adjourned. It's 8:49, we will return at 8:55.
Recording stopped.
I want to come back, just so you know. I'm going to ask that we cut off the work session like at quarter ten.
Okay. People will well pass. All will pass. Yes, we'll pass. Hello, pass your best.
All right, I'm on. This is the bill here. All right, we're going to take care of the answer.
Lemon was coming.
All right. We're meeting for session to order. We already had the pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Mr. McInley? Mr. McKinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here. Are there any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
We did delete number six, right?
Yes, we did delete number six.
What's going to approve agenda?
Second piece.
On favor?
Aye.
Post.
Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to have most, I'm going to make a motion that we've done at nine forty-five. I think when you extend our time well past some of those hours, it's not efficient. And I think people lose their focus and distractions become more. I understand that, and I understand the fact that we have things on the agenda, but I do think we're not given, we're due because of the timeframe.
Our second. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Actually, very interesting. Okay. All right, so we will get out of here at nine forty-five. Or soon, or per. All right, first, we have the mid-year financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. In front of you is the media report, as I say every year. This is kind of our more detailed report. It doesn't look like it because it's nine to ten slides versus the forty pages, but I think it's more meaningful. If you're not a finance person, I would try to put some charts and graphs, you know, not just line by line. You know, in the interest of it is pretty late, I will go through quickly. Anything I can answer tonight, I will. If not, as always, you can email me. But just quickly, you know, first, we're required by the charter to give kind of an estimate of where we think we're going to finish by the end of the year. We're very close to where we were last year. So this year, we're at thirty-eight and seventy-six percent. Last year, we're eighty-one percent. The difference was there was more revenue last year. There was more social programs, you know, the stimulus money. I think overall, we're two million to the good. Some of that is timing issues. One of the things is the expenses are ten million down, and seven million of that is the pension payment. So we normally make the pension payment on June thirtieth, and we didn't do it. And it's not a money issue, it's more, it'd been more of a manpower issue. And we talked about that a little bit last time. So just having the people to get things done in a manner that we've done before. I'd love to do it on June thirtieth, and you know, July comes and you still don't make the pension payment. So if you have the money to make it, we'll get the payment made. It's just one of those things that when you're comparing year to year, payment made in June, payment made in July, there's going to be a difference. So.
Sprecher, have you made this payment?
We have not, actually, it's on the schedule to be made.
Mr. Sprecher, in light of the fact that the pension fund is there for a reason.
Hmm.
It's our obligation to make this.
Oh, it is.
And on time.
It is.
That's, I don't believe that's a good practice.
So we'll have that on the, we'll do that tomorrow. But yeah, I just want to say, you know, it's year to year, that's one of the things. It's an, obviously a payment, but it wasn't made, so it will be made. The classified report, the next page is just a summary report of what you see in the monthly report. So you see forty pages of detail, and then the summary sheet. And again, you know, taxes at eighty-seven percent. Some of these that are always at two percent, grants, transfers, these are things that historically come in at least a quarter late. If you looked at other years, it's very similar. Expenses, again, some of these that are over sixty-three percent, non-personnel costs, things like debt, they're not level. So I think, you know, if you've been here before, if you followed along, not every one of these lines is going to be at fifty percent or forty-three percent. So, you know, where we're at compared to last year is very comparable. Once we get this taken care of, we have a slide on the next page for revenue. So if you go through, a hundred and twenty-four million versus a hundred and twenty-two million. Some of our tax bills went out later. And like I said, there were bills paid earlier last year because of stimulus money. We don't foresee any issues, but this will be things in the monthly reports to come that we're following. But it was just one of those things that at this point, we think it's timing, and we don't see an issue. On the expense side, you can see that that's just the opposite, the sixty-seven to the fifty-seven. To the pension point, that's normally around fourteen million, so half of that will be seven million. So even adding that in, you're still about three million less. And again, it's just when the bills issue. You know, we pay them as soon as we get them. If we get an invoice a month later, one year versus another year, that's how they end up in the mix. But three million on a hundred and thirty-some million, again, we're watching it as a huge amount to the council and the public. But as a percentage, you know, it's in one quarter to say, one six-month period versus another six-month period, it's, it's not that big a deal, as long as we get it in the future periods. So we're obviously looking at that. Next page is areas of concern, and most of these are similar. The top one is brand new, and it's one everybody knows, county fuel cost. So county fuel costs are at sixty-seven percent. I think everyone knows about overall inflation, but especially utilities and fuel. When we put this budget together, we had no idea what the fuel costs were going to be. We're going to have to work with road and bridge and make transfers within their budget. We may have to come to council and ask for money from reserve. None of us want to do that. I just want to put it out there, it's not going to happen tomorrow. The first thing would be to find it within the division or department. But if, you know, at sixty-seven percent halfway through the year, we may need to come to council. County overtime, good and bad news, so we're not at fifty percent, we're at sixty-three percent. But last year, at this point in time, we're at sixty-nine percent. So again, we don't run exactly at fifty percent, but it is less overtime than the prior year. The grant revenue and the state revenue, as I said before, this is a yearly issue that we usually don't have by the mid-year, and we true it up by the end of the year. The next page is highlights, so the audit was completed on time with an unmodified opinion. Revenue expenses are both on track within budget by council. And tax collection last year at this time was ninety percent, this year it's like eighty-eight point eight. So it's very close to the same percentage without prevalence stimulus funding to citizens. And that is the eight pages in six minutes.
All right, thanks.
Enter reports. Three, three items. Mr. Susak, you've heard your time limits, but for my report tonight, I thought since this is Mr. Susak's last meeting, he might give you not with any detail, but just kind of an overview of where his assessment is as the county elections director. Would you give him a short note?
Thank you. All right, so just to, this is to discuss State of the Union in the bureau and how things are going, successes and sort of thing.
While we discuss.
Okay, yeah. So. Sometimes taking a look at, you know, I started here back in, you know, as a consultant back in October, and as a full-time staff member back in December, so I'm going to go from there. First thing that I want to talk about is our, honestly, our business, our biggest success, which in my fifteen years is the biggest success, I don't know why I keep something over business success, is biggest success, sorry. In that time, most incredible thing that I've ever accomplished, or any team that I've been accomplished, actually happened here. It's, it's not a numbers thing, it's, it's more of a narrative. So we conducted, we conducted two elections within six weeks of each other. During that time, we also did a recount, we did reapportionment. The state actually cut our calendar for the primary election from an eight-week ballot access period to a six-week ballot access period. And as you know, there was also the, kind of the cherry on top thing with the courts changing how we report our election results. So this was, this is a testimony to how strong the organization actually is. Because it's, you know, the elections, it's not just the bureau and the board. You know, we work with GIS, with the sheriff's department, with the office of law, the county manager, human resources, purchasing, finance, building and grounds. It's, it's a massive collaboration amongst many departments and many vendors and stakeholders. Kind of give you an idea of how absolutely bananas it is to conduct two elections within six weeks of other, six weeks of each other. Your normal election timeline is about a ninety-day period, about sixty days before to about thirty days after that you, that's really your peak season. In Colorado, there's actually a statutory requirement, you cannot hold a special election ninety minutes, ninety days within a regular, regular election. Because what you're starting to do is you're starting to run processes from one election, your specialists that are devoting, already devoting overtime to, you know, to the current election, are now starting to devote resources to that second election. Emily probably heard me use the word triage more times than I care to admit. We were constantly, constantly in go mode. It, it was absolutely crazy, and not that there weren't any issues that came up. You know, there was the three hundred ballot issue that came up that we addressed. The fact that we had two successful elections within six weeks, about with six weeks of each other, this organization should actually be incredibly proud. I know, I know we have a lot of discussions and sometimes heated discussions about drop boxes. We've had some whoppers in the papers a couple, in the past couple of years. I'm so ridiculously proud to have been part of that process, although it was also pretty awful sometimes. It was a great deal of work. When I say awful, I mean, we were here, there was twelve-hour days, fourteen-hour days. It was, it was a huge, huge commitment. So I, I just, I want to make sure that the organization, the public knows that. I mean, you should be incredibly confident in this organization. I know I am, and I was incredibly surprised because, you know, like I said, we've had some, some issues in the news and. So from there, other, other big accomplishments that we've made, we've begun to, we continue to. We started this last fall, actually migrating a lot of our business processes from a more, I guess it was kind of gone from analog to digital in a lot of areas. The way we manage our polling places, the way we manage our, our inventory of voting systems. A lot of it was done kind of pen and paper, some simple spreadsheets. We've now migrated to a cloud-based management system that we're able to customize. This gives us incredible tracking ability, this, it, we're finally a modern, it was a major leap in creating a more, a more modern office. And staff are committed to continuing that work, we're constantly looking at ways to improve it. And so it's, it's truly a process and work, but, you know, when you consider that we have some eleven hundred pieces of voting equip, voting equipment, the Dominion system itself, three point six million dollars, to really be tracking that on spreadsheets is not ideal. We finally have a, you know, a real-time cloud-based system where we are able to, you know, to track our equipment, to better have, better chain of custody, better track our procurement, capitalization. Another big accomplishment that we had was, as you probably were, a couple of years ago, there was an issue with what we commonly refer to as the purging process. It's under the National Voter Registration Act. It's the process where you have to cancel voters after, after so many election cycles if they remain inactive. You know, the county did go to court over this, that the process wasn't being done correctly in certain years. We're absolutely, absolutely on top of that now. We are doing that correctly, the list management is being done correctly. We recently sent out about seven thousand notices not to cancel people, but to, to manage, it's sort of the front part of that, that process. So the county is absolutely on top of that, we've addressed that issue. Our list maintenance processes are being handled correctly. Another big accomplishment is we hired our first ever, is a new position, our first ever operations manager. It's Emily, hiding in the back, sorry to keep calling her out, but. So the, one of her, her main job focuses is we have that warehouse over on Water Street with, with all of our voting equipment. She's over there properly managing it. She is making sure that the equipment is staying charged correctly, she's doing routine maintenance on the systems, working with engineering to make sure that the, you know, the HVAC systems and the environment that things are stored in is being done correctly. So we now finally have somebody who's really properly managing the voting equipment, and now also starting to work with the vendor, the Dominion Voting Systems, to learn a little bit more about the ins and outs of the equipment and the programming, so that we can bring in-house a lot of things that we may have contracted for, for in the past. And also, we, we recently hired a new deputy director of elections, that's Beth in the back. I found in her first couple of weeks in the office, and I'm sad to be leaving and not getting to work with Beth and Emily, hopefully I'll still be able to, I'll be, I'll be local, hopefully stay in touch in some capacity. I found that her, her educational background and her background in municipal government has been incredible asset to our department. The question came up about having, having cameras at our, at our drop boxes, and how can we improve that process? Knowing her background in municipal government, I said, can you just draft us an MOU, just something that we can start to work with? And I mean, she had that immediately, was able to produce a memorandum of understanding in draft form that we can, you know, now present to our, our solicitor. So, you know, I was absolutely confident in, in hiring her, and I'm incredibly, incredibly happy. And I, you know, I think the county should be, should be really confident in, in that hire. I know there were some, some concerns in the, in the papers and some discussions, you know, amongst council members. I, I stand behind that, those, I'm, I'm very happy with, with that hire.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else? Again, this is, I thought incumbent, because again, I've been here forty-five, fifty days. I know elections is paramount. You saw the passion here tonight. I would echo, I would thank you. His charter and the same charter I've asked council is, you need to help us find the best and brightest. There's not a lot out there that are asking for this job. And I've been here forty-five days, so I've asked everybody that I know, I went to university presidents, I need you, I've asked you to do the same thing. If you want to get this kind of talent, we have to do a little bit more like, and it's out on the internet. Also, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. In the paper, what you going up there? In the paper last week, there was this notice, there's an expo, she's going to speak two minutes to that.
Yeah.
But she's going to speak three to five, and then we'll be done on the same issue you talked about in terms of first hospital. Because I think it's incumbent, and I've got pages here from Mr. Rokovich, from our public defender. There's an impact, guys and girls, there is an impact on the staff in terms of numbers, but the biggest impact is her, Ms. Hill couldn't be with us tonight.
She's, she's remotely with us.
So talk about expo and then a little bit about first.
Okay, so quickly about the expo is next Thursday, the eighteenth. I have flyers, I'm going to leave them on the table out front for everybody. And there's a QR code that you could scan to register, to attend. Share this with friends and family, this is open to the public. The EXO, expo, I can't talk either for tonight, like what, what happens when we get up here? Okay, so it starts at ten to eleven is registration next Thursday at the Woodlands. Our keynote speakers, we're going to have an array of speakers on all of human service fields, including drug and alcohol, aging, children in youth, mental health. So we're going to have quite a variety of speakers, but our keynote speakers, the first one is Robert Su, and he is a digital stocking, and he's going to talk about digital stocking and other technology threats. So that's good for our entire population. We were hoping to have our own detective participate in that, but I believe he is out of the country at the time, so he will not be part of our presentation. Our second keynote speaker is Earl Granville. I don't know if any of you have ever heard of Earl Granville, he's a tremendous speaker. And he, he talks about the, the weight of adversity. And I love his, he, he goes, he gives a, he comes carrying cinder blocks and chains, representing the weight, the emotional weight that we all carry with us. And he's bringing with him, in addition to his topic that he speaks on, he's bringing trooper Alex Douglas, who was, he was wounded by a gunman in Blooming Grove several years ago. He was actually wounded by a sniper who was actually targeting state troopers. He is also bringing with him urgent major Kevin Bittenbender, who has a, he created a foundation on helping people into, back into civilian life and working. So three, they, he, they team up together and do a lot of presentations, and they're just phenomenal. Like, once you've heard them speak, you will not forget it, and you will not regret listening to their stories. So I encourage everybody, like I said, I'm going to leave the flyers out front, take one, share them with friends and family, register. Our goal, we've had six hundred in the past, this year's goal is a thousand, I believe, county manager wanted a thousand, so that's our goal, we have to reach that.
I'm told pre-COVID, they had six to seven.
Yes, so this year.
Hopefully, there's some pent-up interest since we didn't do it in the last couple of years. And I hope you all maybe craft part of your day and encourage your friends and colleagues to be there. Now on to first hospital.
Right, on to the the issues at hand. I want, like, the issue seems to be first hospital, but I want everybody to understand that first hospital in and of itself is a hundred and forty-nine-bed inpatient psychiatric unit, serving children through adults. Currently, they have twenty-four people on their inpatient bed. Historically, first hospital and community counseling were nonprofits, but years ago, Commonwealth Health came in and bought those two entities. When they bought Wilkes-Barre General, they acquired the other two entities. But greater than the inpatient hospitalization closure is also community counseling in general. They're stopping all behavioral health services, so that's mental health, drug and alcohol, and developmental services. That's going to affect close to five thousand people. So right now, we have twenty-five patients on the inpatient unit. And again, I strongly believe we need that inpatient unit, but it's up to Commonwealth Health who they're going to sell it to. They own the building, they own everything. From what I understand, there are two entities interested in purchasing first hospital, but again, it'll be up to Commonwealth Health how they do that. Initially, they came to the table saying that if you want first hospital, you have to buy it all. And there's nobody interested in buying it all. There are seven entities interested in buying community counseling services. So I want you to know that from a county's perspective, we contract with Commonwealth Health for those two, for first hospital and then their community-based projects. It's about two million dollars in county fund. Well, it's our allocation from the state, but that's our contract. So we are working with our managed care organization, which is CCBH, who just re, on Monday released RFI, request for information, that they're going to try and contract with new providers to take over and assume all of that outpatient, partial psych rehab, med management. So they're, they're currently, are, they released that RFI, and we hope to have new entities in place by early September, well before the closure of October thirty-first. We are also working with the people, the county funds people who don't have insurance. So if you don't have medical insurance, you don't have private insurance, we cover those costs. So we are working with Commonwealth Health right now. We are contacting each and every person that we are funding to offer them support in transitioning to another provider. Our other two existing providers are Northeast Counseling Services and Children's Service Center, which also has an entity called Robinson Center. That's the adult side of the Children's Service Center. They have agreed to absorb most of the intake and new referrals and the crisis services right now. So we are, we are weekly meetings, I'll know more information tomorrow if we have any new additional people interested in purchasing first hospital or Commonwealth Health, Community Counseling in general. But that's where we stand. So like, first hospital's a hundred and forty-nine beds at one given time, but we're talking about close to five thousand lives on an everyday basis.
Thank you, Sarah. And I would echo, again, I've got emails, but Mr. Greenwald, Republic defender, and Mr. Rokovich, your prison director, saying this will impact
Yeah.
us immediately, particularly as we approach the budget. Because, so it's something to be very cognizant of, I appreciate the notion that maybe there will be some kind of letter expressed from a staff perspective, from a county perspective, to say we'd like to see it at the table in this, in this process.
Right, absolutely. And also, if I could just, on the budget, like, I know some, I, I believe you thought we got an increase in funding. We have gone eleven years, the counties, not just Luzerne County, but all the counties in Pennsylvania have now gone, this is our eleventh year with flat funding. No increase in mental health funding for any county. So, but if you take into account inflation and increased costs, we're, so we're actually getting less money because the money isn't going as far as it had in the year. So they've offered one-time initiatives, but we can't provide mental health, ongoing mental health services with one-time funding. We need sustainable reoccurring funding. So unfortunately, this is year eleven without any increase. Yes.
Good question. What's the nearest psychiatric inpatient hospital?
There's Moses Taylor in Scranton, which is going to remain open, but that's a geriatric facility. There was Berwick, but now there's question as to what's going to happen in Berwick. And then we move into like Lehigh Valley area, Philadelphia, and then all the way out to Pittsburgh.
Hershey.
Yeah, actually, Hershey, we have very few people go to Hershey. And I shouldn't know, it is, I don't mean to take up too much time, but because, just so you know, while first hospital was open, in the past year and a half, despite having that facility here in Luzerne County, we sent over eight hundred individuals to inpatient facilities outside Luzerne County, mostly Philadelphia. So that, that dramatically affects the ability to do any kind of family treatment when someone's inpatient. How do you treat them when they're so far away from home and the community? The therapists aren't familiar with the services here, so how do you, there's no continuity of care when we're sending people so far away.
Last note I share is, I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Morgan and our EMS, and to Mr. Rosenkrad's team. Ms. Morgan facilitated some of the very early processes of, from the fire, her team helped coordinate some of the Red Cross activity that next day. And she also was conducting a national night out, they had a thousand-plus visit at a national night out of our EMS station. And then also the, Mr. Rosenkrad, because his people were online, and I, I haven't heard the take, but I think what was happening, I think it was Thursday, was horrific. And it impacted them, and you've been on the spot to help them. I guess you have to hear some of that, that truly understand it. You don't want to hear it, but it also has had some effect on, we've lost a couple more in the last week. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? You have anything for county manager minute? Or is that? No, that, that's air mine, that was it, that was about seven minutes, I think. All right. I think it'd be Brett for this one. Discussion regarding an ordinance of the council.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
I think we're very past with the redevelopment at this time.
Okay.
I don't think it's really necessary for this time to spend a lot more time on this.
Okay.
Unless somebody else has.
Well, we had a lot, a lot of discussion.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's give it. All right. I apologize, I said you guys were first and you're actually last. Discussion regarding LCTA Strategic Business Plan twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, John. I'll limit my comments to about seventy-five, seventy-eight minutes.
Seventy-five seconds? Seconds? Good luck.
Um, good evening.
Thank you very much.
My name is Mike Suffler. I represent the Volunteer Board of Directors at the LCTA. I'm the vice chair, and I'm also the chairman of the Strategic Planning Committee. What you have before you is our five-year plan, okay? This is, this was developed with engaged employees. This was developed with the board directors, this was developed with the leadership team over at the LCTA. And everybody's got their hands on top of this. This is about, this is about top decile performance. More importantly, it's about what does great look like, right? And that's what we want to have, we want to have one of the best transportation, public transportation operations for its size, right here in Luzerne County. We made a major financial commitment, and you guys are all part of that to developing the property over in over in, we're in Wilkes-Barre, our transportation center is well underway. And a lot of what you see in that plan is reflective of how we interact with community, how we invest in the community, and how we provide the best level of service we can. and how we provide the best level of service we can, both on our fixed routes and our, our shared ride performance. If you have any questions, please, uh, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us at any time. We'd be more than happy to sit back down with you and discuss some of the attributes of the point.
Mr. Seflow, just one thing that I'll say, just sort of maybe as more of an acknowledgement, anything else, is that, um, you know, one concern that several council members have is the service to Southern Luzerne County, and we've talked about this on the Hazelton area, and, uh, just to let council know, um, our state representative, Bob Schnee, a former council member, is actually, uh, working with L C T A and, and the Hazen's Transit Authority to, um, at least set up a meeting, get us at the table, let the county be a part of that as well. Um, and I think that that's.
Consolidation takes two players.
Yes.
Okay, we have to have two, two willing participants. Um, when we, when we had our discussion with Colts and we started to investigate what that culture would look like, um, obviously, you know, we, we hit some, we hit some walls there, and that's okay, that's alright. Um, it's better that we know that now as a, as opposed to, you know, we have the clash of cultures. It has to work for both organizations. There has to be synergies there, and there has to be savings there. And the, and that's when, that's when the state will embrace that kind of a, that kind of a consolidation. Did I get that right, Paul? Any other questions?
I just wanna know if I can just update.
Sure.
Coming in with, with our vice chairman, Mr. Seflow, said about serving the, uh, Republican the best we can, so we're entering into, we're gonna go into what is called the transit development plan. And so, that's why Department of Transportation is going to supply us with a set of planners that they're, that they're paying for, so it's not on our dime. But what they're gonna do is do, we're gonna do, look at a revamping of our whole transit system. System has not been, other than little tweaks here and there, revamped in years, adjusted, so with demographics changing, et cetera, you need service here, you don't need service there. We're going to do a complete study of the whole transit system in Luzerne County, and, um, we're gonna do what we need to do to get it right, get, get the service in the areas it needs to be. Service industrial parks, et cetera, and we're gonna introduce, we have, so it's called microtransits, new, uh, formula people are using across the country. And that's more of a little like van service, demand response service, in an area, say, say there's a, one of our bus routes no longer is producing, but we still need a little bit of service there for some people. Ben picks them up, takes them to a bus router, takes them to their destination. So we've got a lot of good things coming up. We've got a fifty-year celebration beginning in October. So we're gonna kick that off with a luncheon that's sometime this fall, and then, you know, activities throughout the year. Uh, I'm chairman of our state association. Coming July, we're gonna culminate our fifty-year celebration by bringing our statewide summer meeting here to, uh, Luzerne County. So, and that, and the summer meeting is also a fun time, because it's, we have a bus rodeo. So there'll be bus drivers from all over the state coming to, and transit drivers from all over the state. So we've got a lot of good things coming up. But feel free at any time if any questions on anything.
Just make one more point. So if you take a look at the logo, that's a fifty-year logo, you wanna make, you gotta make it clear, there's no name change, company logo is only used for one year. That's just fifty-year celebration.
Any questions? Alright, thank you gentlemen and council members, please feel free to read through that, if you haven't had a chance, it's comprehensive, that's a lot of information, that's very impressive. Alright, public comment. Anybody for public comment? Alright, hearing done? All in favor?
There.
We're supposed to go to nine forty-five, Lori? Okay, what were we supposed to go to nine forty-five?